This regular meeting of the Board of Education for February 13th, 2018 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on this evening. So if we're unable to continue our meeting, we may take a temporary recess, but not for permanent. So we'll wait, we'll wait till they come into the meeting. Welcome. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna restart. So welcome, everybody. For, this is the regular meeting of the Board of Education for February 13th, 2018. It's called to order. I want to welcome everyone present and to our television viewers. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted as required by state law. The meeting is televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. As a reminder, we now have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin attending all our regular board meetings. And Judy, where are you?
She is.
Oh, she's right in the back. And I also want to call out, just while we've recognized Judy, that she has officially received the credential of Certified Organizational Ombudsman Practitioner through the International Ombudsman Association. And IOA was officially formed in, yeah, let's. IOA was officially formed in July 2005 and is the largest international association of professional organizations for ombudsmen practitioners in the world, representing almost 900 members from the US internationally. The mission of IOA is to advance the profession of organizational ombudsmens and ensure that practitioners are able to work to the highest professional standards. So congratulations, Judy, and thank you for continuing to come to our meetings and to serve the PPS community. Judy's here to listen to public comment and, if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 or at ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening, and I like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language they'll be interpreting, and inform the audience where they will be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance. Go ahead.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Lucia Cabrejos, soy intérprete en español. Si me necesitan, voy a estar al fondo contra la pared. Gracias.
Kinh chao, quívee. De quívee kàn thong yìk vín kèu Vietnam, xin quívee vei fī sau kuàhou chùng. Sè kò thong yìk vín jù quívee. Xin gai mēn, quívee.
Tāi kā hou, yu kōng zhōng man wà zhe guo shuō guó yù. Hai hao bìng, wéi bāo lǐ de zhōu fānyè. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Fikar Asman. I'm interpreting Somali and every Somali person, I will try to help them to understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we have a full agenda this evening. Highlights include, we're gonna start the evening with the superintendent's report and receive an update on the plans for the opening of two new middle schools and other transitions that are underway. We're also gonna receive our quarterly updates from the Bond Accountability Committee and also from the Office of School Modernization, as well as here updates from board members who are serving as representatives on the design advisory groups for the upcoming school modernizations. The board will also vote on a boundary change tonight, and here a presentation regarding open enrollment. And that open enrollment presentation will be the setup for a board vote at our next meeting. And our last formal item will be consideration of a Step Three complaint. Before we begin our meeting agenda tonight, I want to share with the school community that the board will have a second meeting this week. Tomorrow, we're going to have an extended work session to develop a roadmap and work plan for the remainder of the school year. Since July 1st, the new board has recruited and hired a superintendent, ratified several labor contracts, including last week's ratification of the Portland Association of Teachers contract, voted to address issues related to middle grades inequality, supported the plans for health and safety improvements in our schools, significantly changed the operations of our board meetings by adding interpreters, having the ombudsmen at the meeting and the general counsel at our board dius. And it's time for us to chart the next five months of our work and also build a framework for the next school year. So we'll be spending tomorrow, talking about our work, sequencing, aligning, and integrating it, and also looking at how we align with the superintendent and staff's work as well. So we'll be starting to build the roadmap tomorrow. It likely will be an iterative process. All of our documents will be posted publicly and shared, and it'll be ongoing work, and we welcome the feedback from the larger school community. So this time, I would like to ask Superintendent Guerrero for your superintendent report.
Well, good evening, directors. Good evening, everyone. We are celebrating Black History Month here at PPS. School communities everywhere are finding a wide variety of ways to celebrate, and I wanted to highlight just a few examples. Roosevelt High School scheduled a full month of activities for students, ranging from hoodies up on February 5th in recognition of Trayvon Martin's birthday, to a month-long Dream Flags project inspired by Langston Hughes' poetry, in which students write about their dreams on flags that are hung in the Commons area. At Woodlawn, they are learning about the history of tap dancing and its impact on African-American performers. Included is a live performance by Karida Griffith Walker and her Tap Dance Ensemble. At Cesar Chavez, they are holding the first of what will become an annual African-American read-in, which features African-Americans from within PPS reading to our students. At Grant High School, the Black Student Union led an all-school assembly. Additionally, the PPS Pulse has been running weekly stories of prominent African-American alumni, including Harold Williams, father of our very own Natasha Butler, Harriet Tubman Planning Principal. And I had the opportunity to visit a nationally-known art museum last week, which happens to be located inside the Martin Luther King Junior School. It's called the King School Museum of Contemporary Art, and it's the only one of a kind in the nation. It's founded by some PSU art professors, and it features rotating works by nationally-acclaimed artists, as well as works by students at the school. Students help run the museum, and they are exposed to great works of art on a daily basis. Just another one of the little-known groundbreaking projects here at Portland Public Schools. Kindergarten readiness. A recently-released state report shows that Oregon is regressing slightly when it comes to ensuring students are prepared for kindergarten. The report finds that many students do not yet demonstrate certain foundational literacy skills, like recognizing letter sounds or the ability to identify upper or lowercase letters. The takeaway is that high-quality early education experiences and opportunities are as important as ever. The statewide data shows that students who enter less prepared for kindergarten have a harder time meeting the same expectations as their peers. Here at PPS, we've been showing some good results with our early kindergarten transition program. Children attend school every morning for three weeks in the summer, and parents gather twice a week to meet school staff and discuss how they can support their soon-to-be kindergarteners. This program has been made available at 15 schools. Another important holiday, last, late last Friday night, I had the pleasure of attending the end of a day-long celebration, the Vietnamese Lunar New Year celebration at Roseway Heights. I was amazed and tranced by the student performances. It was clear that a lot of effort had gone into the carefully-choreographed dances and the colorful costumes. You can read more about it and take a look at photos of the event on the PPS electronic newsletter, "The Pulse," found on our website. I was heartened by the big community turnout for the event and the celebration of language and culture. Thank you to all of our teachers and organizers of the event. Constitution teams. Many of our high school students participate in a particular course called the Constitution Team, where they learn about the history of American government, the Constitution, and Supreme Court cases in preparation for the annual We the People competition. And I want to be able to recognize all of the high school teams who competed: Lincoln, Madison, Grant, Franklin, and Cleveland. And I want to congratulate the Grant High School Constitution Team for winning the Oregon State Title. So for the second year in a row, they will head to Washington DC to compete in the Nationals on April 28th to 30th. Good luck to our Grant High School Constitution Team. Also, worthy mention, Lincoln Math Club also deserves a congratulation. They competed at the Harvard MIT Mathematics Tournament this last weekend. Students Anders Olsen, Randy Zhang, and Cedric Wong represented the school and PPS at the competition there. Anders placed fourth overall, in addition to coming in first, and I hope I pronounced this correctly, combinatoronics? Combinatorics? Which I had to Google this. It's about using abstract algebra methods such as graph theory and probability theory for counting things that otherwise are difficult or impossible to count. So congratulations to Anders Olsen and the rest of the Lincoln team for their work there at Harvard MIT. And in closing, I thought it'd be fitting to hear from some of our students. So we have a little video some of you might have caught on our website that we're gonna show here for just a minute.
What I like about school is everything, and the teachers are so nice, and I want, I need to stay in this school.
What I like about school is how nice all the teachers are, how supportive my friends are, and the people at this school are always super creative and really nice.
And every grade is like everywhere.
I like about school is I have a lot of friends here, and I'm able to play with them, and they're all really kind, and the school really helps me teach. In third grade, I was new here, and everybody's really nice to me, and so they are now. And I've been getting a lot smarter, and my grades have been going higher since I've gotten into fifth grade.
When I'm in fifth grade, it will be like amazing.
I like Mr. Vladi. I like the teachers, and I like library, computer lab, and recess.
I will ask this school to become bigger and stronger.
I, I think that, just particularly at this school, there's a really nice community, and everyone's always very supportive of each other. And I think the teachers are really understanding and nice, and I just like learning a lot. So I think school's really fun.
My name is Damian, and, wait, would you like me to say my full name?
Yes, please.
I like to learn and help other people learn other things. And it really makes me feel good inside, and also the other people feel really good inside.
What I like about school is that all the teachers, when they're saying something, they always listen to you and like take your advice about something. And everybody is very nice, and everybody tries to help people and tries to build community.
I like soccer and the fields opening, and I've been getting a lot of better grades.
I am in second grade, and I hope everyone enjoys what I said.
Thank you, Brian Robertson, for producing, and thank you to our wonderful Llewellyn students for being so willing and enthusiastic about being interviewed. Stay tuned for an occasional series where we get to hear directly from our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And I hope somebody will pass on to Llewellyn that we did enjoy that, Damian. And I'd like to know his full name. So thank you, Superintendent Guerrero, for sharing news from across the district about our students and our staff. Now, we are going to have a presentation, again by the superintendent, sharing, sort of giving us updates on some of the transitions that are happening. And I'm gonna ask the board to hold your questions, or you write them down, and wait till Superintendent Guerrero gets, gets through the presentation, and we can have our questions at the end. And as a reminder, we're gonna have our public comment at a time certain at 7:00. So if we're midway through our questions, we'll just break, have our public comment, and then continue on. With that, Superintendent Guerrero?
Thank you. We're gonna do our best here to provide a very high-level overview, some highlights. You're gonna hear from a cast of characters, of staff. I'm gonna challenge them to keep their slide to about 90 seconds, knowing that we'll entertain your more detailed questions at the conclusion of the presentation. So you're gonna hear about how progress is going with our two middle schools, and many of the other transitions that are part of this process. So we're gonna start with an area that kinda, here I have it. Harriet Tubman. Harriet Tubman Middle School. I'm gonna call up our COO, Jerry Vincent, to come up and talk to us about an area that's, we've been putting a lot of attention on understanding, and he's gonna just give us a little overview here.
So the facility's part of Tubman. There we go. Excuse me. So we've contracted out to a design-build firm. They've walked the entire site, they've done assessment, they've come back with some information, wherein the cost estimating, vetting process with them. There's still a lot to be worked out. Design-build, by its very nature, means we don't have the full design yet. We do have an item on the board agenda tonight to prove them for some of the things that they can move forward with. So we have our environmental firm that is going to do all the air monitoring and testing. They are actually a couple days ahead of schedule. They have some equipment set up at the top of Tubman right now. The Moore's arriving by the end of the month. The month of March is asbestos abatement inside the facility, and then contractor preparation, and, and then April, we hit with the double shifts all the way through in what they have. So that's what we know today on here. Our nutrition services folks have walked it. The kitchen's in pretty decent shape. They don't need to do any upgrades there. And we're working on a design of the sciences and some of the other areas that are necessary for middle school conversion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Don't go too far. Next, we're gonna talk about some of the engagement that's been taking place with the Tubman community. And we have our fabulous planning principal here, Natasha, who's gonna talk about that engagement process. Natasha Butler.
You'll, you'll come on in a moment. Don't come on loud.
There we go. Good evening, Natasha Butler, Planning Principal, Harriet Tubman Middle School. Well, we have a lot going on, but it's all in a very positive light. Today, we completed our first tour of Harriet Tubman Middle School with our fourth grade, I mean, four feeder school teachers that are at Boys Elliott Humboldt, Saban, Irvington, and Yomel Kay. And so they had an opportunity to see the space for themselves, to envision being teachers and partners in the work. We also have planned for next week, our parent engagement meeting that will be held at Harriet Tubman, that will include a vision statement and plans for the remainder of the school year as to how we will involve them in the work. In addition to that, students will also have an opportunity to tour Harriet Tubman. That work will begin on Wednesday late opening. We will have our current sixth and seventh grade students touring. Our eighth grade students will have an engagement activity about secondary and post-secondary success at SEI. And our sixth grade, incoming sixth grade students will actually tour Harriet Tubman the very next day on Thursday. So next week will be basically used as an opportunity to invite parents, community partners, and students into the facility. And we've had great support from our facilities department in helping us to orchestrate that work. We've also designed our temporary logo for our students. It's our little solidarity logo. We would give the students an opportunity to decide on the logo and colors once they are in the school for their 2018-19 school year. But as a result, we wanted to come as a united front, so students will receive their t-shirts, and from now until the end of the school year, they will wear their t-shirts to all of the planned events that we have going forth. Some of those plans include a Harriet Tubman reunion of alumni that will help, that will take place in June. And so efforts are being made to send out messages via Facebook, "Who went to Tubman?" and to prepare them for the event, that will allow them to come into Tubman and hopefully be mentors to students in the future. In addition to that, we are securing dates and times for other community-building activities that will include sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, such as a skate party, a field day experience, a end-of-the-year barbecue, just to name a few.
Thank you very much, Principal Butler.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We're gonna move on to our, our next middle school, Roseway Heights. Planning Principal Kathleen Elwood is actually out in the community tonight, but playing a key supporting role has been Cameron from our Communications Department, and she's gonna talk a little bit about the engagement. But first, we'll have Jerry talk again about the facilities update there.
So we have a design-build contractor for the amount of work on Tubman, just working on Tubman, and we have another design-build contractor working on the other schools as part of the middle school conversion. So Fortis is our design-build contractor. My comment is similar to the rest of them. They've completed their full assessment, brought back some scenarios. We're looking through them tonight. They have a partial approval. We're doing incremental approvals of the board because of the timeframe. Before we wait, negotiate out everything, this is what keeps it going. We're doing the same thing with the city, trying to set up incremental approvals. And it's the only way I know how to try to get all this work done in seven months, or even attempt to do it. So they've done their assessment. We've had some meetings with, with VDS, some intake meetings. And coming up next is working, like I said before, in our design of classrooms and other interior work. In the next two, three weeks, we hope to have full project timeline, cost estimates. We're also trying to take the work for all of this and put it in a Phase One and a Phase Two, what, what needs to be done for this school year, what can be done after. When we have that, what we believe as facility setup, we work with the principals, and then we will, we will vet that out because, get some other input. But it's just gonna be difficult at this point from the timeline. And our nutrition services is doing a few things out there, too.
Great. Good evening, Superintendent and Directors. My name is Cameron Vaughn, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Planning Principal Kathleen Elwood, who is actually speaking at an event at Madison High School this evening. To date, we have had two well-attended feeder-school community meetings at Roseway Heights. Principal Elwood has done a great job making families and students feel welcomed and included, and she has encouraged community participation by providing opportunities to become involved in several committees, as well as forming a future site council. Through a robust outreach via Translation and Interpretation Services, multilanguage autodilers, as well as PPS community agents, we've been able to encourage and engage Somali, Vietnamese, and Spanish-speaking families to attend. Attendees have been given an update by Transportation Services on work being done to address transportation concerns, and staff has met with and will continue to work with the City of Portland on safe routes to schools updates for the Roseway Heights community. Student participation has been encouraged at meetings with discussion on potentially renaming the school next year, as well as a logo which incorporates identity aspects of all of the feeder schools forming Roseway Heights. Students performed at the January meeting by introducing, excuse me, by introducing attendees to an all-student Harvey Scott mariachi band, which was fantastic, and also the Harvey Scott School Choir performed. We've been delighted to have attendance by board members at previous meetings, and we welcome all to this month's meeting, which will be held at Roseway Heights School on February 28th from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. As always, dinner, interpretation services, and childcare are available, and this month's meeting will include district and school updates and activities to build a unified identity as they transition from four schools to one.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to Riggler and Scott. If I could invite Michael Bacon from our DLI office to come down.
So, good evening, Michael Bacon, Director of the Department of Dual Language. And as you remember, the last time I was in front of you, not too long ago, a resolution was passed to transition Riggler to being a Spanish DLI-only school, and that the Riggler and Scott neighborhood-based English programs would be combined. So immediately following that, on the 23rd of January, the Senior Director, Oscar Gilson, who couldn't be here tonight, he and I, along with a transition facilitator, Alma Velasquez, who's doing our Admin Practicum, and I met with the principals to begin that transition team selection, as well as, as the planning for the development of that moving forward. So then we also sent out a notification to all the families in both neighborhoods about this transition and the resolution passing. And then last week, on February 8th, the transition team met in working agreements, and there was representation from both schools. We have two teachers and parents from both programs, as well as the assistant principals and the principals involved in that planning process. And we're gonna meet again this Thursday, but I wanted to give you a little, just real quick, highlights around the, the plan going forward, and we'll put these, post these notes up on our website, as well as the school websites. But they started stepping back with, after doing working agreements, is to really have a vision for the transition, and what would be the ideal, how would our community look together. So they really were adamant about it being students and families all one community, that students, there's a welcoming system for families that register during the school year, seamless transition of services and supports, and there are all other pieces to that vision. And then they, we started talking about specifics about the steps, and we're excited about some of the ideas these folks came up with, but from example of the summer programming that goes on in Scott, they're gonna make sure those regular families are involved in the summer program that occurs during Scott through the SUN program. They both have spring big events, and they're gonna invite both communities to their, their mutual, their own events. They're gonna establish a buddy relationship system for the students transitioning from Riggler, so that they have a buddy to match up with in the Scott school. So there are a lot of other things as well, including making sure that our special, students with special needs, that they're introduced to the support staff at Scott, but before they even go there, so this spring, so that we're seeing that as a seamless transition. So there are a number of things around, just in terms of facilities, logistics, and staffing. So Oscar Gilson, Senior Director, Oscar Gilson's working directly with the principals and the corresponding departments to make sure that happens. And the last thing that I'll share, and then I have one quote for you from one of our planning teachers, is that we, in the, in the Riggler neighborhood, as we transitioned to that, is that we've also stepped away from pulling that out of the lottery process because it's no longer applicable, and we really wanna break down that barrier, that when you walk in, you, this is your home school, this is your neighborhood school, and Spanish dual-language immersion is the offering we have for you, and trying to really build that as, you know, you're accepted, this is your school, this is the program for you, and supporting families and making that their, their home school. So, all this said, at the end of the first transition planning meeting, one of the teachers, well, I'll quote Alma Velasquez, who's facilitating, says, "I was heartened by one of the regular teachers who said she felt much better about her students moving to schools after meeting with Scott staff and parents." So I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Rose City Park. We have Mr. Vincent once again to give us a quick facilities overview.
So our biggest challenge with Rose City Park is, it's probably our least friendly Americans Disabilities Act school in the district. So we are identifying a lot of work out there, what can we do, short-term and long-term, because if you started design today, an elevator wouldn't be designed, permitted, built, and occupied for over a year. So that was one that would span, you know, Phase One, Phase Two. So we're looking into, you know, lifts, we're getting some input, you know, what else can we do out there? Path of travels, very difficult to get across that school. And so it's one of our main concerns with Rose City Park.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. And also to speak to the engagement, Assistant Superintendent Lopez.
Good evening, Director, Superintendent. Jeremy Cohen could not be here. Principal Jeremy Cohen, who's currently the principal at Roseway Heights, could not be here tonight because he has kindergarten connect, connect tonight at Rose City Park. Principal Cohen is meeting in the next couple of weeks with the Beverly Clarifam families, who will be moving to Rose City Park because of the boundary changes, which is bringing... because of the boundary changes, which is bringing in students from Beverly Cleary to Rose City Park. There will be various joint meetings to get to know you, events for incoming Rose City Park families from both Roseway Heights and Beverly Cleary over the next couple of months. A leadership team is being formed of teachers to plan for school climate, professional learning communities, academies, academics, equity, partnerships, and other plans.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Lopez. Pioneer. Jerry, do you want to talk about the Rice and Applegate facilities?
So, what our contractors have identified to date, and what we're looking at is design of split classrooms and those needs, cost estimates, timelines upcoming, and just a variety of things on these sites. What I should say for all the middle school conversion sites, we're also looking at the bond work that we would be doing and trying to align it while we're working on these in terms of lead paint or turning the water back on, those kind of things, too. So, if they haven't already fallen in that timeframe, we are shifting that so we can try to get this body of work done at the same time, which also gets into some of the securities and cameras and some of those things.
If I could invite up Principal Mike Frambois to come down to talk about the engagement. La frambois. A little French.
Good evening, Superintendent and the Board. Thank you for having us. Pretty much, Jerry, covered the top of things. I'll let Mr. Burns introduce himself.
Hello, Board. My name is Chris Burns, the Assistant Principal of Pioneer Program. Thanks for having me. So, the next steps moving forward is we have a community meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, the 21st, to engage families in the Pioneer community and conversations moving forward. We are setting up staff tours at Applegate and Rice. And then in late February, early March, we'll be moving forward with parent and student tours in March and early April.
Some of our staff have toured Applegate and Rice to complete a list of things that we thought we needed to get going. And we've made that list, and they're being worked on right now, I think, as you heard, as far as quotes and bids. Senior Director Mary Pearson attended our staff meeting Tuesday before last to answer staff's questions. And Human Resources will be coming out to answer staff's questions in the next couple of weeks. We met with Library Services to talk about how we can have a library at Applegate, which already has space for a library, and a library pretty much set up. We just move our books over to there. And then we're working on how we can provide library services at Rice with robust classroom libraries in place, but then also a mobile library, which would have connections to the PPS library system, but how that would be available to people. We're looking at adding a media specialist and a librarian, so that there would be somebody onsite at all times who could operate the library. We haven't figured out all the details yet, but we're working on it.
Thank you very much. Access. Mr. Vincent.
Well, I guess that's the same comments that contractors have walked the site and done some assessment, and we're looking at the costs right now. Same information. We hope the next two, three weeks have all the information in with a complete cost and timeline.
Thank you. Could we have Andrew come down and talk about engagement efforts, please?
Good evening. Andrew Johnson, Program Admin for Talented and Gifted Education. A progress report has been sent to families and staff, just updating them where we are in the process. A planning committee has been set up with parents and staff and students. And coming up, district staff will be on hand to answer some questions that are coming up about transportation and childcare and so forth. A walkthrough through the campus for staff is scheduled for February 28th. Walk-throughs for families and students are being scheduled. Dates will be announced soon. And Human Resources representatives will also meet with staff to determine what the next steps are and to answer their questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent Lopez, if you could talk about our Head Start programs, please.
Hi, I'm Eileen Ischam, Director of Head Start.
Thank you.
We have been working with facilities regarding the five classrooms that we have at Applegate. We have a total of 77 children. Thirty-four will be what we call returners, because there were three this year. The other 54, if I did my math right, will be going on to kindergarten, and we are helping those families transition both to kindergarten and to another Head Start site, or a preschool site that works for them. We kept the two Native American culturally-specific classes together by moving them both to Kelly. So, there's an early Head Start that is part of Albina, and then our Head Start that's culturally-specific will also move to Kelly. We've worked with facilities very closely, and we are going to move two classrooms into the Vestal facility. They actually have their, middle school kids are moving out, so they have a lot of room for us. They are also welcoming us with open arms. We've had conversations with the Kelly principal as well. The reason we really looked at Vestal is because when we do our community needs assessment, we can tell in the city where there's lack of preschool services. The northeast Portland is pretty saturated, and so that's kind of how we chose that, and it's going to work out. We're going to support a new playground. Hopefully, we'll get some funds from facilities, and then we may have funds from Head Start that would be able to support that. We've had one staff meeting with Antonio. A couple of letters have gone out to the community, and we've met twice with Neighborhood House, who provides the support services to the early Head Start and to OCDC, who actually provides the funding. And they really are looking for year-round classrooms because they have the young babies all year round. And so, the Kelly site, one had potential air conditioning that can be upgraded. So, that's going to be helpful. So, our...
I would, excuse me, excuse me. I would just ask, I would, excuse me, I would ask the audience to allow our presenters to present, and there'll be an opportunity for public comment later this evening.
So, I'd just like to respond to the transportation issue. Head Start has not provided transportation for 16 years. It's, 16 years ago, it was over $300,000 to try and transport our children. So, unfortunately, we do not, but we do serve 819 children currently at nine sites. And there is a lot of parent-to-teacher interaction engagement because they do drive them.
Yes, and I want to add for the native classrooms that are moving to Kelly, we have met with Neighborhood House and with NEA a couple of times, and we also had them tour different sites. And they really like Kelly because of the year-round, because the wraparound services and the facilities. So, just want to share that, that we have engaged it.
So, we have two other classrooms that do need a home, and we are working with facilities very closely. I believe we'll have something within a few days here to nail that down, so.
Thank you very much. There are Human Resources and Communications elements. If I could invite Kylie Rogers and Harriet Steve as well?
Good evening. The Human Resources update this evening is the focus of the district office has been the analytics team taking the district enrollment projections from PSU and using those to analyze and determine the projected enrollment at each of our schools next year. And this is a process that happens in the spring. But for the two new middle schools and the feeder schools, we have attempted to accelerate some of that information so that we can support the principals in beginning their staffing processes, working with employees, the principals, and our unions to identify the next steps in the process, and hope to be moving forward next week with being able to identify where staff is coming from the feeder schools and going to the middle schools, and what the next steps are as we open up the district-wide staffing process.
Good evening. Communications' primary role has been to support the planning principals as they work to bring their communities together, which is, they consider one of the most important things that they have to do in getting these two new middle schools started. We're trying to keep all the families involved informed and help make sure that all families, regardless of their background, have access to the necessary information. We provide logistics, such as meeting sites, food and childcare when it's needed, interpreters and translated written materials. We do direct communications to specific school communities as needed, including such as emails and autodilers, again, translated as appropriate. We are also hoping, excuse me, we're helping with the whole school branding, which you heard about just a little while ago from Natasha, working on logos and T-shirts. And again, these sorts of things are as important as many other things in helping establish the sense that we're all part of one school. And you'll see those designs here soon. We're also working on websites for each school and for Rose City Park. We're now providing regular updates on the progress of the middle schools through the PPS Pulse and Board meetings. And we have been working to provide more factual information to counteract some of the misinformation that's been disseminated, whether that's talking with news media or producing FAQ sheets. And our underlying goal is to make sure students, families, and staff feel informed, welcome, and engaged. We know we still have work to do on that front, and we are making sure that we address any gaps that we have developed as we go forward.
Thank you. We're going to conclude this roundup of highlights by talking about the middle school we launched this year, and that's Oakley Green. So, I'm going to invite Senior Director Oakley, Senior Director Carl Logan to come downstairs to talk about Oakley Green.
Good evening. My name is Carl Logan. I'm Senior Director for the Schools of Feeding to Grant High School and Jefferson High School. And so, the areas of emphasis that I'd like to share with you today are, we talk about improved staff climate through ongoing communication, is the restorative practice PD that we've been doing with our staff in ensuring that they have an opportunity to have a voice at the school and to share what's working, what's not working, and that's done at every staff PD. Also, in this area of improved staff climate through ongoing communication is a weekly principal newsletter that goes out to the whole community, including the staff. And the principal is meeting with our building union reps weekly. For professional learning communities focused on lesson analysis and student work, I would say this has actually been one of the highest leverages or best practices we've implemented there, and it is our PLC work, Professional Learning Communities, and it's facilitated by the teachers. I would say it's one of our, again, one of our highest leverage, and it's also one of our biggest challenges in terms that we only are able to implement it twice a month. The goal for next year is looking to see how we can build a schedule that has it every week. In the PLCs, they look at lesson planning, and they also look at how assessment is, teachers are using assessment to drive their instruction and make instructional shifts and changes for students. For our inclusive behavior practices, another piece that the staff there is working really hard on is making sure that there's restorative practices for our students and ensuring that student voice is being heard. This year, they launched the Student Government and really trying to work with our students to take more ownership of their school and feel free to come and talk with staff and leadership on things that they want to get started. One thing they wanted to get started this year was a student store. So, we do have a student store at the school. We also have another group of leaders at the school that is supported by our counselor. And so, those two groups is where our real focus is for our student voice and student empowerment. For partnerships and families, the two areas I'd like to emphasize is our SCI partnership, which has been really amazing at the school. We have three strong coordinators or mentors through SCI. Not only are they supporting our students and families, but they're also supporting our teachers on how best to work with our students and their families. We do have a SUN program at the school that is, I know there's been discussion on how we can make it, make our SUN also have offerings in the morning. With our school starting at 9:15, like other middle schools, that's pretty late for middle schoolers. And so, our middle school, many of our middle schools are there by 8:30. So, we're looking to see how we can have more offerings through SUN in the morning. Our professional development needs, I would say probably one of the biggest areas that we're looking to move forward with is providing professional development for staff on the adolescent brain, or what, you know, how middle schoolers really tick and what drives middle schoolers, which could be different from day-to-day or hour-to-hour, period-to-period. And so, we're looking forward to moving in that direction. Also, more culturally-responsive instruction is needed at the school. We do have some teachers who do an amazing job in that area, and we're looking to put some funds so that we can release certain teachers to go watch other teachers teach. And then I would say the third piece of professional development that we're moving forward with is our Avid program, and ensuring that our Avid strategies eventually become school-wide.
Thank you, Senior Director Logan, and thank you to all the staff for your updates. Board, that concludes our presentation this evening. The staff is ready for any questions you may have.
So, really appreciate the updates, and I think we have a lot of questions. I think I might just ask, turn to public comment. We're just a few minutes before 7:00. So, that way, we don't have, start the questions and then stop them and start again. And if, by chance, people aren't quite here because it's not 7:00 o'clock, we'll give people an opportunity to cycle to the end of the, the bottom of the order, if that's necessary. So, with that, Ms. Hewson, would you call the first, well, before you do that, I want to provide just some overarching comments about the public comment period and just review our guidelines. We appreciate members of the community participating in our meeting through the public comment section. We look forward to hearing people's thoughts, reflections, concerns, questions. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen. And the board member, during public comment, the board members and superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during the public comment period, but our board office will follow up on board-related issues that are raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration for everyone. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. Presenters will have a total of three minutes to share their comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When there is one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, a red light will light up, and a buzzer will sound. And then we ask you at that time to conclude your comments. People are also free, if they have more than three minutes to say, to submit written testimony to the board or to send it to us by email. We'll read it. So, we appreciate people's input and your cooperation with our guidelines for public comment. And with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Hewson now to call the first person who signed up.
Our first two speakers are Rachel...
Our first two speakers are Rachel Hall and Mauricio Simolea.
Is that something you'd like to have distributed to us now or later?
Let's wait.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, my name is Rachel Hall, R-A-C-H-A-E-L, Hall, H-A-L-L. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am here for one reason, to persuade you to keep Pioneer School in its current location. I would like to tell you briefly about the role Pioneer has played for my family. My daughter has difficulties with emotional regulation that make being in a regular classroom extremely difficult and at times impossible for her. She began attending Pioneer in November for stabilization, and it worked. The staff embraced her and understood what she needed to be successful despite her disabilities. In fact, she learned enough skills at Pioneer to be able to move just last week to a focus classroom. Pioneer was not a long-term placement for my daughter, but served as a critical place of support during a challenging time. And I know that a fully intact and properly cited Pioneer program is an imperative for other more impacted children. Others have spoken out about the numerous reasons why the Holiday and Youngson campus must continue to be Pioneer's location, but to drive these points home again, we have a letter from a psychiatrist speaking to the matter and have prepared photos to help show you how the current facilities meet the needs of Pioneer students in a way that the other locations cannot. We'll get those to you shortly. No matter how much taxpayer money you spend to adapt the buildings at Applegate Rice and now, we hear, Columbia, their basic architecture is problematic and they are located in places that are not safe for our children. I am sure that all of you came to your current positions because you desire to make your community a better place for all, particularly for the children of our public schools. I imagine that you see yourselves as people who strive to make good and just decisions, even when those decisions are at times difficult because of the complexities involved. It's a tough job. You are now in a position where your directive to find a home for access, however laudable in the abstract, will harm the children of Pioneer if you continue with your currently proposed solution. Don't convince yourselves that because you are making a hard decision, it is necessarily a brave or correct one. Make no mistake, this move is a mistake, and if completed, it will tarnish your legacies. I'm going to invite you right now to find a place of quiet listening and curiosity within yourselves. Lean in and listen to the staff and families of Pioneer students in a way we haven't yet seen. You can tap into an amazing brain trust in the parents and staff of Pioneer. We know our children are complex, and we have hard-won knowledge about what they truly need to thrive. And thriving, not just surviving, is what we want for our children. Listen to us, believe us. To do otherwise simply perpetuates the systemic racism, classism, and ableism that damages all of us. All of you sitting before me have an opportunity, an opportunity to make things right. Whether you have the will to do so, time will tell. We are watching, our children are watching, and they will be the ones who are the brunt of your poor decision to dismantle Pioneer, or their successes will be your successes if you do the right thing and keep Pioneer together at its current location. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Guadalupe. I'm very pleased to be here for the second time, testifying before you guys. The first time I testified back when you guys had a meeting about budget last year at Madison. Back then, I don't think my testimony was necessary because what I was testifying for wasn't really on the chopping board. But this time, I'm going to testify about my experiences as a Latino, as a Hispanic at PPS. I have both kids, both of my kids are currently at Jefferson High School, and they have been a product of PPS since head start. And so I've gotten to know the system very well. And with that, I want to share my experience as a Hispanic Latino. And quite often, when we talked about, you hear about equity in the system. To me, as a Latino and to a lot of Latino families, Hispanics, equity does not really show up. Quite often, there's two colors that you speak of when you talk about equity. And let me tell you, brown, it's out there and is barely, barely heard. I currently sit in talks with the principal at Jefferson High after a complaint we submitted last year, after finding now that though about 15 to 16% of the kids at Jefferson are Latinos, less than 1% actually achieve the success to go on to a four-year college. I know Jefferson has been praised for having a good result in graduation, but let me ask you, where are those kids going when they're not really prepared for higher education, four-year college, and Jefferson has basically dismantled every technical career option there is at the school? Quite often, I've seen those kids graduate last year and the previous year working at retail stores. To me, it's sad, very sad. We have submitted a complaint at the late part of the spring last year, actually 2017, and there was an investigation. And let me tell you, that investigation was very simple, and I almost want to say null. We're back at the table talking with Senior Director LaFontaine, and thanks to the help that Mr. Antonio Lopez has lent us, we're actually making progress. But I want to tell you that this progress is very slow. And I wish that you as a board, you, Mr. Guadalupe Guerrero, as a superintendent, pay closer attention to what's going on with our families in the Latino community. With that in mind, I want to say that there was testimony at the last board meeting that you guys had at the Jefferson High School, where testimony by Ms. Colber said that there was a lot of congruency within the student clubs, and that was a lie.
Can you wrap up your, can you just wrap things up?
Yes.
Give one more sentence.
Pretty much, that was it. And that's my personal testimony to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Next, we have Bernardino De La Torre Guerrero and Casey Anderson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak before you. This is actually my very first time speaking before the board. I know a couple of you here and perhaps no myself being involved in Portland Public Schools. I have a junior at Jefferson High School, Jefferson dancer. I'd like to just first start by providing a little bit of background information so that you get to know some of my background, and then share a little bit about my experiences for the past 15, 18 years with Portland Public Schools, my concerns, a couple of comments, and then a recommendation for the board. First of all, my educational background is a bachelor's degree in psychology, ethnic identity studies, certified state counselor of addictions for the state of Oregon, and my master's is in educational leadership. I have worked in Los Angeles Unified School District, DSL Department. I've also worked, been 20 years in Oregon, worked in Lane County and school-based programs of the 4J School Districts, Springfield and South Eugene. I was instrumental in implementing the multicultural coordinators in those schools, wrote up the proposals and were implemented. And also, for almost 10 years in Monmouth County in school-based programs, both in north and northeast schools. I won't name all the schools that I've been involved, but I've been involved with Portland Public Schools as an itinerant worker in school-based programs and as a parent involved with my daughter throughout the years at Beach K-8. I've been involved in the site council, part of the PTSA, and personally, a part of the PTSA at Jefferson High School. My concerns are basically, from my experiences for those 15 years, is clearly the lack of equity, particularly with Spanish-speaking families and students. I have seen overt actions of cultural sensitivity by administrators toward parents and students. I've spoken with a lot of administrators, higher-ups. They've come and gone. There's a lot of turnover. And so my concerns is that primarily is that we, there's been complaints, like Mr. Somieta mentioned, 2017 of June, I was one of the persons that signed that complaint. There were about seven other parents that signed it, and there were two people that were designated to speak, I being one of them. Because of that, I feel I've been targeted, excluded, discriminated, simply because we're speaking up for our rights and for equity for our students and for other families. I think that one of the things that I'd like to say is, I know that the job is hard for administrators. Right now, personally, I work for Washington County, and I'm assigned to work for Tigerd, Twalton, and Sherwood High Schools. And I know the work that's being done there, myself as an itinerant worker. The last thing I want to say is, I highly recommend for you, and please listen, that I think it's imperative and warranted that you actually have an independent investigation done of how the services are being provided for Spanish-speaking students and families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, School Board, I'm very excited to have this opportunity to share my feelings with you regarding the move of Pioneer Program from its current location to Applegate and Rice. First, thank you, Superintendent and board members, for making an attempt to address the concerns of parents, students, and staff of Pioneer. Though I feel the attempt falls dreadfully short, it was nice to see some compromise from the superintendent's original plan to separate the Pioneer Middle School rooms throughout the district to moving them mostly intact to Rice. What bugs me about this plan to move Pioneer is what I perceive to be hypocrisy, discrimination, and apparent systemic racism involved in the decision. PPS constantly waves the equity flag, and at our building, we have at least monthly meetings to focus on the subject. The employees of PPS are expected to understand how equity in schools leads to greater achievement by the students, and eventually, the students will go on to make a more equitable world outside of the school. I cannot see any equity considered in this decision. The move does not take into account what students of Pioneer and Applegate need, only what the superintendent wants to do. To me, it appears what the superintendent would like to do is find an easy home for access by targeting the most vulnerable of PPS students, students of color, native students, students with disabilities, the poor, and chronically underserved. To make your plan work, Superintendent and board members, you will displace four buildings of people. You will throw away 15 years of work at Holiday and Youngson, making a safe, equitable, and secure, safe place for some of the neediest children to serve the wants of the most affluent and able. Moving Pioneer from Holiday and Youngson, then fixing up the building for a more white and affluent population is gentrification. You say students will receive the same continuity of services they currently receive after you take away their building, and then the next breath say, instead of a gym, the kids will get a multipurpose room. Instead of a fully functional kitchen, the kids will get just-in-time lunches, and only Applegate gets a library. This sort of talk reeks of separate but equal Jim Crow policies. Even men and women who are incarcerated have access to safe recreation space, libraries, pardon me, and food on site, and are treated with more dignity and respect than you're treating these kids. This decision is, in all appearances to me, a violation of Pioneer and Applegate children's civil rights. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Good evening, everybody. Greg Burrell, B-U-R-R-I-L-L. For years, I have sat in this spot testifying to the board and to several superintendents. And one of the things I've spoken of repeatedly is forgiveness. Many of us would love to be able to forgive PPS, so I'm hoping that PPS takes the first step making forgiveness easier. There is a level of dysfunction that we have experienced, and because it affects our students, the memory of it does not fade for parents, educators, or community stakeholders. In my written remarks to the board, I'll mention some of the travesties that I've experienced in the 13 years that I've been a substitute teacher for Portland Public Schools. Superintendent Guerrero, Board of Education directors, educators, parents, students, and stakeholders, unless we make creating a culture of trust and respect between our various groups our primary mission, it won't matter how we try to fix a broken and inadequately resourced school system. Even if we had the resources envisioned by the quality education model, a toxic culture will likely scuttle our best efforts. And considering how this district's employees at almost every level feel that they have been treated, you will feel the ponderous dead weight of those who do not believe what you say, do not trust what you do, and take their solace in serving our students alone. Superintendent Guerrero, your leadership is critical. You must create a process to identify the top 10% of PPS employees, engage them in the process of creating a vision for how our bureaucracy can function to deliver the best education possible for our students, and enlist community and other stakeholder partnerships to create community schools that have the support of students, educators, including classified staff, parents, community organizations, the business community, as well as state and municipal government. You have one important accomplishment to your credit. I have heard how excited the PAT bargaining team was when they found a superintendent who understood what students were asking for their students and why. And you've made one unfortunate decision, taking a building that was designed and built for our special education students and giving it to a program that is much as a symbol of privilege as a program that would have been perfect for the child I was. I know that when you took office, you were unprepared for our lack of adequate facilities, so because Kairos, PDX, and Access Academy had organized voices, they were spared. Despite your exemplary participation in bargaining the teachers' contract, you will pay some price if our most vulnerable students, those at Pioneer, are moved to inadequate spaces. This looks like more of the same to anyone who's been around for a while. So let me just close by saying you have my support. I hope one day that PPS has a full-time teaching job that I am interested in fulfilling. Until then, I'll be a substitute and a union volunteer keeping an eye on all of our students and the educators charged with their care. Thank you.
So thank you to all the community members for your testimony tonight. We appreciate it. And again, if you want to follow up with further comments, either contact the board office, Roseanne Powell, or you can email board members. With that, I want to go back to the presentation that we had before public comment, and I want to ask if any board members have questions about any of the particular updates that we received. Director Bailey.
I wondered what the status was of finding a permanent principal for Oakley Green.
Senior Director Logan or HR Chief Kylie Rogers, if either of you could talk about where we are in the process.
And also where we are with Scott and Rickler as well.
So we are currently in the process. We have interviewed and We have interviewed and taken several candidates through our process, and we're still moving through it right now.
We are hoping to wrap up the particular process around Oakley Green in an expedited fashion with the candidates currently in process and expanding our pool by the beginning of next month.
And Scott and Rikler?
Yeah, it's all, it's, it's the same process, so there's candidates who have been interviewed for those two schools, and I'm not sure how much I can say about certain schools, but it's the same process.
So, our senior directors have, have laid out a process, working with HR, our Assistant Superintendent, there's a candidate pool, eligible candidates that have been screened, candidates are being vetted, interviews are happening, but there haven't been any recommendations to date.
I'm going to ask a question because you're, you're up there, before we switch to a different topic. Just back still on Oakley Green, I really appreciate the thorough update about what's happened, and appreciate that it appears the work with the staff and students is really evolving and getting them ready for hopefully a strong, a strong year next year. I'm curious whether there has been, and you may not be the person to answer this, but maybe you can tell me who can, if we've done a sort of lessons learned from the Oakley Green rollout, and whether that's informing both sort of Oakley 2.0 for next year and also the other two middle schools?
Yeah, so we have, and we presented, I believe that was two, maybe two weeks ago, and, and because I'm working closely with Natasha, there's, there's many lessons learned that's, that's informing the work we go forward with Roseway and Tubman.
So, I would only add that we had our planning principals work with the faculty there. They did a individual-by-individual survey, collected their thoughts, their thinking. We invited Oakley's administrative team to also come and present to the Cabinet as a case study to learn what were some of the takeaways. A key theme there was a short timeline to, to be thoughtful about a lot of the components in launching a school, so that was definitely one that stood out, and there's definitely a lot of implications for ways that, you know, we've, we've made some moves to, to support the school's ongoing work this school year.
Were community, parents and community members involved in that lessons learned?
Yes, we've had several surveys that go out this year, and our site council and PT at Oakley are very, very involved.
Are the results of the lessons learned, are you going to share back to the school community, any of those lessons?
To, to the Oakley school community?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've been sharing as we go, as we go along. We have not shared the specific presentation that we put together that Mr. Guerrero was speaking of, and we can do that.
I, I, I think it would be, I mean, they're different audiences, so you might want to emphasize different things, but I, I think it would be helpful for the school community to, to know that you heard, and, and what, what takeaways you, what you have, what lessons you have drawn from, from what you've heard. I think that'd be helpful.
So, I have a question, but it's not, it's, I think I'll direct it to the Superintendent, maybe you might call somebody else, but on January 30th, I looked on the Pioneer slide that Mary Pearson met with the community, and I'm wondering if there has been a cataloging of all the issues raised that is visible to the, visible to the community of issues, concerns that they've raised, either about the educational programming or the facilities, and, you know, where, where that would reside, so people could, so it's making it visible so that we know how things are going to be addressed, and the school community.
Sure, fair question. I think the best person to speak to that is Mary Pearson herself.
Good evening. Boy, that was electric there. So, I just want to be clear that the meeting was just with the staff, and to answer your question, yes, I do have a, a full documentation of what the concerns are. They are not, however, publicized anywhere, and we can do that if that's, if that's what people would like. I think they're mostly things that you've all heard about, concerns about space, about library, the cafeteria size, multipurpose room, those are, those are the primary concerns. Any follow-up questions?
And is there a hiring process for a second principal?
There is. We are actually in the final stages of that and checking references currently.
And was there staff and community engagement at the beginning of that process?
There was staff in the initial stages, yes. There were, yeah.
But not community?
There was not community.
Does, don't, doesn't our policy require that?
That was not the direction that I was given, but I understand that is a policy for typically principals, but it hasn't been for special schools principals, and so we did not involve community in the beginning. So, in hindsight, yes, we, we would have liked to have done that.
So, I guess just my follow-up is, I think it would be useful to have sort of a catalog of what the concerns are, because I think making them visible keeps them front and center about what sort of the target is, the things we need to address and hit.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions about the updates? Director Anthony?
I do not have a question, but I do have a comment. Unfortunately, it looks like Jerry Vincent has run away, and I haven't seen Dr. Burnham, and I think perhaps Dan Forbes went off and is chewing on Jerry, but, oh, there he is. I got to the first meeting of the committee that's dealing with the environmental concerns at Tubman. It's a terrific group of people, and Jerry, I want you to know that since that meeting, I have been hearing from people who are on the committee. They are some of the best informed and also most critical people in the community, and they're, they're just fabulous. The committee is fabulous. The way you have set it up is terrific. You're, you're a rock star. They love you. Yeah, actually, seriously, yes.
Thanks to all them for their willingness to serve, because I think we really do have a great group of people.
So, I don't, I don't know if Eileen is still here. I've had Head Start question, oh, sorry. A Head Start question, just the, the shift from Applegate to Kelly, it's a pretty big geographic distance, and I'm wondering, and this is more of a, it sparked a general question I have in my mind, is whether do we have a scattergram of like where, where the families are that need that? And how, how well we're doing just generally in matching students who live in a particular area with needed services?
So, we do have a scatter map, so we know where children live. Of the kiddos that are currently in the Native American Head Start classroom, six are those called returners, so there are three, they will soon be four. So, we were working directly with those families, letting them know that this is an option, but there's also other options. There's also a Native Montessori classroom at the Fabian site, which is also an option that we've heard that some of them are choosing, and we're working directly with Fabian School getting kids those slots. Besides that, of the 34 children, like I said earlier, that are returning, we have family advocates that work with, directly with them, and they will help them find a classroom that is close in proximity to where they live. Also, at the foster site, it's the, the housing, the foster housing, and we've been in communication with the principal at Kelly who's connected there, and so we're, we're thinking it's going to support the Native community in that area that hasn't really been supported, especially because the Soletts also has moved out. They used to be at the Whitman site, and now I think they're at the Columbia site, so there's shifting going on, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Okay.
Before you leave, sorry.
Sure.
This is actually a more general question. Somebody asked me today, and I didn't know the answer, so I'm going to ask you. How, how many, so we have 819 kids at nine sites?
Correct.
Do you know what the unmet demand is?
I really, all I know is, we've expanded, and it seems like a really good number right now, and there's some classrooms where we still have slots that we're trying to fill. So, we've really expanded in the last, you know, seven, eight years, so I really don't know that answer.
Okay.
To be honest with you, but we have, any opportunity we've had from the state to ask for more money for more slots, we have taken advantage of that, and then we recently are up to 25 extended-day classrooms through some federal money dosage and duration. So, we have 10 half-day classrooms that have an AM and a PM session, and then we have 25 full day for parents working and going to school. Let me share that today.
So, can I just clarify? This was not meant as a criticism? This, this is part of my ongoing rant about the lack of state funding for education and early education? So, just looking for ammo, sorry.
Well, unfortunately, we only get, I believe, 80% from the state, and we are serving more kids, so it's an issue. We brought it up, yeah.
And if I can add, we would like to come and, and talk to you about the P3, right, the initiative. Actually, we have close to 2,000 kids that have not access to pre-K. So, that demand is there, and we serve about 800 kids, but we know that we're only serving a tiny fraction, probably a third, of those kids that can benefit from some type of pre-K experience.
Thank you.
So, I was glad to hear that the Rose City Park Principal was reaching out to the Beverly Cleary families that are transferring over. I just want to say, I hope that we can also have that connection between the, still a year away, but Beverly Cleary kids who are going to be attending Madison. I'm hoping to, that we get some connection going there as well.
Did you have anything else?
I guess one last, there is a lot of work going on. This is, okay, first of all, impressive that you were all able to do your slide in, I don't know, it might have been two minutes, but there, there's an astonishing amount of work going on, and so I think we, I think it's important we acknowledge that, because I know everybody, everybody's looking a little tired, but thank you for all your work.
Yeah, did owe that, thank you all.
So, as, as we've said earlier, we probably, this will probably be an issue, these will be transitions that we'll continue to talk about, and appreciate this, all the work of the staff to, to put together the updates and the work itself. So, with, with that, let's see, the Division 22. So, as everybody is aware, at the last board meeting, the district had a Division 22 report that was presented. There were some items that were not included, so tonight, we'll be revisiting that agenda item, and I'd like to ask Superintendent Guerrero to introduce it.
Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Ron Curtis will elaborate on why we're revisiting this.
So, we discovered after a conversation with ODE that there were three items, three assurances that were inadvertently left off the checklist. So, we have checked with the staff members who oversee those areas, and we are in compliance. It was just a technical, didn't get it into that slide, so we fixed that, and we just need the record of having this conversation with you tonight, and then we'll be able to submit that report to ODE, and we will not be late. We still meet that deadline.
For the record, what were they?
Can you just specify which are the?
I don't have that in front of me. I'd have to go look for it right now.
Okay, there weren't any addition, I think last meeting, there were six areas that we weren't in compliances, and it's not that there's additional areas of non-compliance?
No.
So, it's, okay, yeah, so it's just reporting areas that were in compliance?
It was just a technical part that was, we had already checked those areas, they just didn't end up in that checklist, and it wasn't until the person at ODE looked at it, realized we had left them off, and so we just double-checked with everybody, but we had focused more on those areas we weren't in compliance, and so it was just a technical oversight. So, sorry, we will check that better next time.
For my own edification, I can do my own comparison, because I've got the old document.
There you go. I think the most important thing is they're not areas that, they're all areas that we're already in compliance with, so it's not an oversight of those issues. So, thank you. You've completed the Division 22 requirements.
Okay, thank you.
So, shifting to, we've already had a lot of discussion this evening about our facilities, and to continue that, we have sort of a three-part presentation on, more on facilities, and we're going to hear both from our, from our Bond Accountability Committee, the Office of School Modernization, but also the Design Advisory Group Board Reps. And we're going to start with the Design Advisory Group Board Reps. So, we have four Board members who are liaisons to the Design Advisory Groups, to either the rebuilds or the, the new schools, and tonight, where it's appropriate, we're going to have reports, and I'm going to start with Director Constam, who is the Board Representative to the Lincoln Design Advisory Group.
All right, thank you. So, Lincoln had its first kickoff Design Advisory Group. It was a lot of the same people that comprised the Master Planning Group, really just sort of get acquainted and look at the work to come meeting. There was discussion around the schedule, the proposed schedule, so Lincoln is proceeding into design development right now, and will even go forward with the CMGC contracting, but will not go into construction until summer of 2020 for opening in fall of 2023. And there is some opportunity to accelerate that schedule, but that's, that's the current plan. So, there was a little bit of discussion around interim measures to address overcrowding at Lincoln, given that a new facility is five years out, but that's a little outside the purview of the Design Advisory Group, so that's about it.
Great, thank you, Director Constam. Director Anthony is our liaison to Benson, but since the Design Advisory Group isn't, not going to meet till next year, there's no report yet. Director Bailey, the Board Representative to the Madison Design Advisory Group?
Thanks, and maybe should clarify, again, the Board's role on the Design Advisory Groups, which is mostly to observe, ask, ask questions, but not be a content participant in that sense, as, that sense, to ensure that it's a good process, that the public is involved and feels free to chime in, and that in particular, we do good outreach to all the constituents.
do good outreach to all the constituent groups, but especially historic land or served groups. So with that in mind, I joined the Madison Design Advisory Group last month, attended a meeting, and then just, uh, last night, um, the DAG toured Roosevelt and will tour Franklin soon. It was a great tour, I want to thank, and I, uh, I'm sorry, Assistant Principal Dan.
Malone.
Thank you. Uh, gave us a great tour, we had a great discussion, all sorts of points raised and addressed, um, and, uh, also got a little bit of an update on Madison, like the Construction Technology Program is like fully, uh, fully enrolled now, and that's great news, and also that, um, uh, I, I think it's Gina Yurkovich was responsible for writing grants to get materials for the programs, which has been an issue in the past. So, uh, lots of good stuff happening there. Um, so Madison's on track to start construction in the summer of 2019. There will be a number of student engagement efforts in the coming months, um, in March and April, including like there's a, uh, the Madison Open House, there'll be some engagement there. Right now, we're in the master planning, big picture, so there was some preliminary master planning done before the bond passed, um, that's, uh, continuing to evolve, and there'll be a report to the FAL Committee on March sixth and a report to the full board on March thirteenth to give us an update. It's pretty exciting stuff, I think, uh, I observed just a lot of interaction with DAG members and a lot of excitement, as well as some really good questions being raised. That's about it. Uh, the big concern is money. I mean, the construction costs are going up so much that, um, I think all of our projects now are bracing for value engineering, i.e. cost cutting. Um, I want to raise quickly one other issue, which is, I was on the grant DAG, um, which DAGs run about a year, the first year of planning. I really would like to see ongoing updates with the DAGs after the DAG work is done, because stuff happens, and I understand or have heard that there's value engineering going on with grant right now. We, one of our lessons learned from the first go-around at Franklin was, it'd be really nice to get some community feedback on potential value engineering before it happens, um, or at least, you know, it's great to get updates and have that follow-up recognition, you know, quarterly, not, and, and again, doesn't need to be a big production, um, but that's, we sort of fell off the edge of the earth, so it'd be great, um, to have that ongoing, and especially if there's that kind of value engineering, engineering happening to at least, um, be able to provide some feedback as stakeholders who are heavily engaged in, in the initial process.
Good suggestion, I heard that from, uh, many of my neighbors in the Franklin community. Director Rosen, um, you're the board representative to the Kellogg Middle School Rebuild, or Build.
It's a full replacement of Kellogg. Um, so the timeline, there's a couple of meetings left, I've been to a couple of the meetings. The schedule is demolition, demolition, construction and salvage, March to July of this year. Design development and construction documents for the new building, March, um, twenty-eighteen through January twenty-nineteen, and then the construction of the new building is July twenty-nineteen through November twenty-twenty, and then the school opens September twenty-twenty-one. Um, as far as the schedule goes, they're on schedule, and a schematic design phase review processes going on right now. The budget, um, with the issuance of the schematic design phase cost estimate, there is a budget reconciliation process that's taking place now to get the project back on budget. Um, next steps, the steering committee, including, um, leadership from the Office of Teaching and Learning and the Office of School Performance are gonna meet to prioritize these cost-reduction options, so the design team can incorporate them. And then, um, concerns or issues, same thing that, um, Scott brought up, the bidding climate. Um, the team's trying as much as they can to incorporate the latest market cost information into the budget, but there's still a lot of volatility and shortage of labor in the construction industry, so they're reaching out to firms that would be interested in bidding on the project next year. And then, um, lastly, in terms of a concern or issue, is the sooner the better, um, to get the feeder pattern settled and the principals selected, so that they can better be integrated into the project, allowing them to feel engaged and committed to their new school.
Thank you, can I just ask a point of clarification?
Yeah.
I thought I heard you say that the school would be completed in November twenty-twenty, but it's not gonna open till November twenty-twenty-one?
Let me see if I got that right. Construction of the new building, July twenty-nineteen to November twenty-twenty, so move the staff into the building, June to July twenty-twenty-one, and then open September twenty-one.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So it'll be completed in November, but it won't be occupied for another eight months?
Right, until the following September.
Or autumn?
Jerry? Let's read. Okay.
Thank you, Director Rosen. Um, Director Sparza Brown, do you want to ask your question about the, generally about the rebuild, the builds and the modernizations?
I do, um, I want to just make sure that, we had discussed before, so lessons learned from Franklin regarding the special education space, um, and we've discussed, uh, potentially hiring a consultant that would look at those UDL issues. Where are we on that? Um, is that, um, are we proceeding with that?
Well, I've, I've asked that we do hire the consultant, and I just talked to, I don't know if Levon.
Director Rosen, maybe we should, uh...
Do you not want me to answer that now?
Well, I, let's, um, I have a feeling there might be an answer from, there should be an answer from staff.
I know, I know we have it on the agenda for the Teaching and Learning Committee. In fact, I'm just looking at some slides we're preparing, so, um, and we have talked about how we're gonna support that. Actually, we feel like it needs to be supported ongoing throughout all the bond projects.
Yeah.
So as we think about the, um, reorganization in my department, we really believe there needs to be somebody that has universal design, um, and experience. So we've been having that conversation, we haven't decided where that really fits. Yes, we think we need to have people who are expert in that, um, and we will share some information on that at the Teaching and Learning Committee on the twentieth.
So, on, as far as the DAGs, at what point, um, do we need to ensure that that person is on board?
Well, we need somebody like now, and I've gotten some feedback from the disability community that I've asked the project manager to incorporate, but I, I, I mean, I think it's very contemporary, the need.
And so that would be because Kellogg is the first school in the pipeline?
Yeah.
So, um, maybe the best thing to do is, um, I think staff is noting that, and the, the issue and the accelerated timeline and that Kellogg is, um, sort of most urgent, because it's just first in the pipeline?
Right.
Okay.
And just to clarify, you know, each of our architectural teams has universal design experts as part of their teams, but our issue is with any revision to our own educational specifications based on our experience with our prior work, and this is an area of work that we really have not explored and have not delved into enough to make sure that as our EdSpecs develop, for Kellogg and for our twenty-seventeen bond high schools, they really reflect, um, what we've learned from the work we've done so far.
So I'd say the issue is, there's a little bit more to that issue, and the issue is, is that the disability community doesn't see themselves represented on the DAGs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just to click comment, Director Sparza Brown, I do want you to know that the experience has been heard and learned and incorporated by our impacted principals. They are very actively engaged with the preliminary designs.
Great.
And, uh, it's had an impact on more than just special ed classrooms. Uh, yeah, they've, uh, been much more conscious about what they're putting in the basements now.
That's, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. And thanks to all the board members who have agreed to fulfill this role, um, on behalf of the district and the board. Um, so our second item, um, and this is all gonna flow together, but, uh, we'd like to have Kevin Spellman with the Bond Accountability Committee, um, present the quarterly report.
Chair, uh, Chair Berman Edwards, Directors, Superintendent, I'm Kevin Spellman. Um, I'm joined today by Louis Fontenot, who's a BAC member, you've seen him several times before, uh, before we begin. I have to say that sadly, this will be Louis's final duty as a BAC member. He's, um, taken on some additional professional responsibilities that, um, preclude him from continuing on because of, uh, time constraints. So, um, I'm gonna miss him greatly. Um, our meeting last, uh, regular quarterly meeting was held January twenty-fifth, um, in the commons of the new modernized Franklin High School. It's always good to see those facilities, and we were pleased to be joined by Director Anthony. There's a great deal of work going on. PPS staff is currently managing the following work, closeout of Phase Two construction at Roosevelt, and work on Phases Three and Four, closeout of construction at Franklin and Fabian, construction work, significant construction work at Grant High School. Um, there's a formal process underway of lessons learned on district standards and EdSpecs, and of course, planning and design work for Kellogg, Madison and Lincoln, and, uh, plus the health and safety work. One of the biggest concerns that, uh, came up during our meeting, and, um, there's no surprise here, but OSM is recruiting for several positions, and, uh, we're, we're concerned about that. Those positions may be very difficult to fill, given the current, um, industry environment. Staff has also undertaken a significant outreach effort to engage potential contractors for the upcoming work, um, and, uh, we'll s- see how effective that is. I think the Madison, um, CMGC proposals are due shortly, maybe even this week. I attended a, a, a recent industry event, Dan Young was on a panel with some other school district representatives, and, um, they told us that there are two and a half billion dollars worth of schoolwork, uh, that's been approved in this area. So we have a great deal of competition, um, to, uh, attract both staff and contractors.
Uh, the current issues on the two thousand twelve bond program, um, the budget now forecast, I'm sorry, um, the budget forecast now includes the forecasted expenditures of contingencies. Um, this now eliminates any confusion caused, um, causing some to believe that more unencumbered funds were available than was really the case. The two thousand twelve bond program budget now stands at five hundred and ninety-three million dollars, of which four hundred and seventeen million dollars has been spent as of January first. Now that the final four million dollars of the board contingency has been applied to Grant High School, and the, and after the funding of the Roosevelt Maker Space, uh, the net remaining contingency reserve funds at the program level are effectively exhausted. The project budget, um, are included in for Grant High School, is, is included in the Grant High School, and it's hoped that they will be sufficient. However, extreme vigilance will be required, um, as work proceeds in order to stay within the project's budget. Uh, closeout work continues on the completed schools, and several cost issues still remain unresolved at this point. However, now that that's said, uh, the projections, um, do indicate likely savings of approximately two hundred thousand dollars from the combined current budgets of Franklin, Roosevelt and Fabian. Um, on to project schedules. The Phase Three site work at Roosevelt will be completed on March first, and the Phase Four Maker Space, um, awaits land use approval, um, and a building permit. Um, this work is scheduled to be commenced, scheduled to commence this summer. Um, the unforeseen conditions at Grant High School, um, affected that schedule as well, and the team is currently working on resolving that, on recovering the schedule, which will include, um, some Saturday work.
We also track, as you know, track equity, uh, equity issues, and we were pleased to get some results on student, uh, involvement during, uh, two thousand seventeen, and as you know, that takes a number of forms. Uh, the most, uh, exciting for us, I think, to hear about was the fact that the SETI architects are working, uh, closely with the Benson Architecture Class throughout the school year, and that kind of, um, commitment, certainly on their part, but also opportunity for those students is really outstanding. But you've heard in previous reports that there was some concern about the, um, um, uh, performance at Franklin High School in terms of certified firms. So, a subcommittee of our, of the committee met with the contractor and OSM, um, in December to talk about that. The, I guess the good news is that the actual results came in at seven point five percent, which is nowhere near the eighteen percent aspirational goal, but it's better than we had been hearing and had been projected. And in addition, or by way of mitigation, I guess, there was also a twelve million dollar contract that was awarded, uh, to a Native American-owned firm, but their certification is federal, and so under the PPS standards can't be, uh, counted against that eighteen percent. We're still hoping for, uh, significant, uh, results at Grant High School. We don't have those numbers yet, but, uh, we'll be looking for those. During the quarter, there were two.
Kevin, can you go over that, the Native American certification not counting?
It's, um, it's a federal certification that this company had. I think under state law, uh, this firm is too big to be, uh, counted as a certified firm. I think that's the, uh, primary concern. So whether, whether the, the board considers a firm that's too big to be a target firm, no matter who they're owned by, is, is a policy decision, uh, but I thought it was important you knew that.
And these are our aspirational goals, not compliance markers.
That's right.
So if there, that was included, what's that move, what would that move the percent?
It would be well above the eighteen percent.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, during the quarter, um, there were two recordable incidents at Grant High School in terms of safety, uh, but both were minor events, there was no lost time, they just have to be recorded, and overall, the program safety record is, um, outstanding.
Audits of the construction expenditures on Franklin and Roosevelt, and the Franklin and Roosevelt contracts are completed. Uh, the results are being used by staff as they close out the contracts. Um, the final report from your performance, um, auditors was delivered in late June and offered a number of recommendations. Uh, the subcommittee of the Bond Accountability Committee, a subcommittee of the Bond Accountability Committee has been formed and, uh, to review all aspects of these audits.
Um, as we look at the two thousand seventeen bond program, some of the lessons learned from two thousand twelve are being. As we look at the 2017 bond program, some of the lessons learned from 2012 are being carried forward by OSM. And part of that is the steering committee concept on each project. And these, these involve the project teams, the designers, and when the contractors come on board, they'll be there, but maintenance principles, and the offices of teaching and learning. And that's, I think I heard Director Rosen mention that issue at Kellogg, and I think some of the shortcomings that were uncovered in 2012 could have been taken care of with more early involvement. So we're hopeful that that process works. The demolition package at Kellogg has been bid and, and came in under budget, I'm happy to say, one of the few. And the CMGC process, procurement process for Madison's underway, and Lincoln will be shortly to follow. By far, our biggest concern on the 2012 programs, schools, relates to budgets, and those of you on the DAGs already know this. We think that the project teams are going to have to be extraordinarily creative to fulfill the programs within the budgets. And we're certainly hopeful that that can be done, but we're going to be watching that very closely. The health and safety work is underway. Water fixture replacement continues. The design of the fire sprinkler and/or fire alarm designed for seven schools will be complete and bid out by April, with construction starting this summer. Same schedule for four schools that have additional seismic work. Planning for asbestos abatement at nine schools is underway, and that work will take care, take place this year, too. You, you've heard the status of the middle school conversion work, and just to be clear, some of the bond funds have gone to some of that work where it fits into the bond mandate. And a final draft, we, we looked at a final draft of the execution plan for the health and safety work for 2018, and I think that perhaps is going to the committee, your committee this week. Happy to take any questions.
The two safety incidents at Grant, does that include the fire?
No, these, these are personal injury incidents.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Under the Grant, the slide on the Grant Modernization Under Challenges and Opportunities, structural, structural issues at B C Link, and the next one, could you amplify a little bit on those, the asbestos down?
The, I, I think when OSM comes up after us, they'll have much more specifics on that, but essentially, it's unforeseen conditions on that project that have caused some time delays and cost impact.
Mr. Fontenot, I just want to say thank you so much for your dedication and the professional expertise that you have brought to this. It's been a tremendous amount of work, and we're just so lucky to have such experienced members of our community willing to serve in this capacity, and you've been a real leader. So thank you, we'll miss you, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Kevin, please extend our thanks to all the members.
I will do that. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now to bat and cleanup, Jerry Vincent.
I'd like Scott Perella to join me. So you all remember Ken Fisher, who's been our program manager for HIRI. He met his five-year commitment to us and moved on this fall, and Scott has come in from HIRI to bat cleanup and start up on the new bond. So I will, I was madly listening to the questions and Kevin and Louis, so we don't repeat things. But do we have a, is this PowerPoint going to end up up there on the screen? Dan Young, our senior director, was going to give this update tonight, and late last night, he said, "I think I have the flu," so I don't.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I got confused as to whose slides were whose.
That's all right. So I'll keep it moving in case it's not coming up.
Maybe while you're waiting for the, the slides, I can, I had a question actually for the last group, but it relates to you and somewhat relates to Ms. Rogers, just the issue of the open positions and that the Bond Accountability Committee expressed concern about, and given I do a lot of work in the construction field, I know this is just problematic whether you're on the construction side or on the government permitting side. Everybody's busy, and lots of people are hopping around to better offers. And so I'm wondering, I don't see that the, the board and the district is needing less facility services.
Right.
And I'm wondering if there's a strategy for filling those positions, just to make sure that we have the capacity in order to support the work that keeps coming your way? Superintendent Grera, if you-
Well, there, there are talent gaps to fill everywhere, but this is particularly one we, we need to make sure we have internal capacity to move forward. So maybe Jerry, you can give a little bit of a-
Sure. So we're currently seven positions short, and if anyone's been around since the 2012 bond and know our story, we've been short people. I mean, we have, we have, we've got the same dozen people or so down there making this work. When you look on the slide, we're up to $1.4 billion now. So our concern is twofold with what we have set up with the wage system right now, class comp. And I doubt, even if we extended it, who's out there who wants to come here if we were to go above that? But our concern is, is filling the positions right now and then retaining the people we have, because they are being, you know, as more districts pass bond measures, and, and I, I know some of them are being wooed. And so how do we keep our people and retain, and how do we recruit and get people to come here? You heard Mr. Spellman talk about the 2.5 billion or so that's immediate coming up. The other part of their presentation is there's 5.4 billion overall that's heading this way soon. That was just the first fruits part that's coming up. And so we're looking at, you'll hear us talk about it on escalation. I'm in my 30th year in K-12 construction this year, and I have not been able to keep up with where our escalation is right now in the contracting, and it's unbelievable. If you look at coming in with an educational specification and going out with trying to provide four years out on what escalation might be, it's how do you build anything right now? How do you start anything off on budget? But Director Brent Edwards, we're very concerned in how we get these positions filled. We are advertising everywhere we can, and maybe two candidates will apply, that kind of thing, maybe one, sometimes none. There's a lot better money and, and perks out there in the, in the private sector right now. So it's, it's a concern of ours.
Did Evergreen pass, do you know?
Was that today?
It's-
Yeah.
I do not know. I think it was today. And that would be another 600-some million dollars, almost 700 if it does. So, and we're all competing for the same contractors. We may need, I'll just say it, we might need to come to you in the ensuing year and say, "We're going to have to adjust this schedule," and that's not because design or whatever, it's, there's no one out there. So just want to take that number, or do you want to wait a year? And there'll be the, they changed the plan, broken promise, but, I mean, do you just award something because it's 30 million over just because we had a schedule we were going to stick on? So we don't know where this is going, but it's crazy right now. So let me, if I can just step through some of these things without repeating, and I'm sorry it's not up there. If you look at page three, our BAC talked about it. I would just want you to know that for you, for yourselves, the community, the 2012 bond, we cut the ribbon on these things in August, and they're a lot of fun, and people move on, that box is checked, and we all move on. But we're not moving on. We still have staff that are working on these. We're working on the closeouts, well, ongoing of Roosevelt and Grant, but truly, there is a lot of work left to be done in closeout for Fabian and Franklin. And our summer IP-16, which was the Chavez elevator, was a two-year, two-phase, one summer, second summer. All these projects have to be closed out paperwork-wise. And then also, we're doing commissioning on these right now, which the, it's, it's a nice word for saying, we are going in afterward and evaluating all of the, the structures and the, and the, our wraparound infrastructures and utilities, and making sure that they are working in a way that they're supposed to be sustainable and are most economically functioning. So we come in and do commissioning afterward. That's a lot of work that's going on right now. Let me see if I can-
Is the Chavez elevator done or soon to be done?
Yes, done and working on the closeout, yes. Yeah. So one of the things that's, you know, right over here, just showing the same thing, we have a lot of things still going on that are not closed out. This is the list I was referring to up on top here. So our teams are working on the 2017 projects. There's a crossover with some of those members who are still working on the 2012 closeout, plus the seven or eight that we're short. So there, there's a lot of effort going on right there. Roosevelt, we have, without reading this here word for word, but we, we are looking at, March 1st is the targeted date for Phase Three to have the field improvements done. We are getting a mild winter comparatively so far. I hate to even say that. So, and, and I'm, I'm learning. My first two winters here, they told me we're, we're absolutely abnormal, so I don't know what normal is. So if this is more normal, then, then I'll take it. But this is, let's just stay on track unless we get the rain, the snow, or the whatever, and it starts to turn this brand-new field into mud. So I've talked to the district athletic director, to talk to the site coaches and directors that say, "I know right away they're going to want on this thing in April to do practice, they can start their games by May." But, you know, when you're trying to break in a brand-new field, you don't get a second chance to make a first impression, and we don't want that to turn into a mud bowl by their first game. So they're looking into possibilities of starting maybe some away games and then come back, but that's our target date to get that done. We're wrapping up some other areas. Phase Four is going to need to be a conversation that we will take through the Finance Audit and Operations Committee. Phase Four, as you may recall, is a $5 million Maker Space addition. The site has brought up some issues there that we need to investigate through about two or three different areas in-house. You know, we're added custodial care, what do you do on FTE versus enrollment versus teachers to staff this area? We don't want to just build this wonderful thing and, and nobody came. And then also, as you may recall, if you're on the board previously, all we were building was a shell. There still needs to be a fundraising mechanism for all the equipment and everything inside. So we'll have continued conversations about what that project looks like and what its timeline is. We're going to finish its design, and we're going to get it permitted, which is good for a year, and then extension, extension. But we'll need some committee board members to help us talk about how this thing rolls out and, and when it rolls out.
If I could just underline what Mr. Vincent is saying, given we've identified a couple risks, budget pretty much, you know, at the line-
Yes.
-on top of organizational capacity, we really want to invite the committee to think about this Phase Four work at Roosevelt, and, and think about how we're going to prioritize work that we know we must complete versus this additional piece at Roosevelt that, that perhaps could be delayed.
Yeah, correct.
Another aspect of that from the teaching and learning side is that, that was raised by Principal Rischdick recently, is that there's been a significant investment in CTE programming at Roosevelt already, and it's, given the enrollment of the school, the CTE offerings that we currently have are under-enrolled or, or, you know, not fully enrolled. And so we want to add to that, but it's a proposition that we need to discuss really thoughtfully in terms of the enrollment that's there now.
Right. And it's not like Yvonne doesn't have enough to do, but I think through teaching and learning, it's a broad-based, district-wide CTE conversation needs to take place, so we fully understand what's happening at Madison and, and, you know, Lincoln, and then of course, at Benson. But I think also bringing to picture what this, the shell ends up looking like for Roosevelt as well. I think the, I think Principal Roosevelt's comments were that we're so under-enrolled, some of these wonderful things that we already have opened up, we're not actually taking full advantage of right now. They're already paid for and up and running. So we need to take another look at the Phase Four and its timing, and how to bring all the supports and wraparounds to make it work.
So not to highlight it again, but definitely would like our board directors to really think hard about this one. This is a $5 million Phase Four. We may, we may need to get across the finish line.
Right, right.
Just a clarification, so this is the additional work that the previous board approved?
Correct, correct. Timeline? Yeah. Yes. Yeah. And, you know, Mr. Spellman's comments that we're down to the 100,000s we're counting, and this is my 17th bond, so I knew it was going to happen when I got here a couple years ago, when you're talking about, well, it's a couple million here or this, but it comes down to the 100,000s, and it gets down to the 50,000s, and, you know, you're, you're rolling that car into the gas station on empty. So that's exactly how the 2012 bond is operating right now, so.
So before we leave Roosevelt-
Which is phenomenal enough because of the way construction costs have done since the 2012 bond has passed.
So before we leave Roosevelt, this is a, this has been a longstanding issue in the Roosevelt community. So it would be, it's going to take some doing to convince people that, that a, any, any further delay is, is going to be in the best interests of Roosevelt students. So what I would encourage is a really vigorous discussion about CTE and, and the larger question of STEM. And, and I think we can use Roosevelt as, as an example. What I've heard is that the current spaces are not being used as, as much as one had expected. And I think in general, there's been kind, you know, there's been an absence of any sort of vision within PPS about CTE and STEM. And now that we are rebuilding teaching and learning, I think it would, it would behoove us, especially with these, with the design work happening around the high schools, I think it's really imperative that we start paying some serious attention to the question of CTE and STEM.
Absolutely agree.
Across the board, and, and in particular in Roosevelt.
It's not only that, it's, it's also the flexible spaces that if, they appear to be underused right now at Roosevelt. Some of that, I think, is just a capacity issue, if you have 900 kids instead of 1,300. But I think some of that is a teaching and learning issue in terms of, you know, what's our educational vision, and how do we do that in high schools? Some of it is a cultural issue of trust around, do I trust kids to go off and do good work when they go into a flexible space where I can't see them if I'm a teacher or not? That's a, that's a school cultural issue.
I think one thing that was great about-
It's all part of the teaching and learning discussions that we need to, to move on.
One thing that was great about recent meeting that we had at Roosevelt on this topic is that the Maker Space is fully subscribed, which means that teachers are feeling like they've been adequately trained, and they have a sense of how they can make use of the Maker Space facilities for their different classes, whether it's algebra or drama or whatever, and they're waiting lists to get in and use those. And so that's, that was heartening to hear.
So just one thing to note, and this is more on the teaching and learning side of things, but just in terms of the utilization, so I'm looking at the Roosevelt enrollment, instructional hour enrollment, and you have only 43% of the seniors at Roosevelt taking a full day of school. So perfect time for students to be seeing what they're interested in, that maybe propels them into a particular major in college or in community college. But that seems like a real opportunity when you have half the students who are seniors not in school a full day.
If I could speak, I wanted to let you know that there are a lot of great people- If I could speak, um, I wanted to let you know that there are a lot of great people doing work on CTE. We have a great opportunity also with the Measure 98. Um, as you know, all the transitions, the late information from ODE. I mean, it's just, um, a long list of the things that could've done better. However, we have great staff members who have been convening around high school success vision. Um, and what we need to do right now is get to this last point of hiring the chief academic officer, so that we really have a leader that's gonna pull all the work that's already going on. We have a lot of CTE classes, but it's just the, the mapping out and trying to figure out how and what we offer where in time to inform this process. So, I just want you to know, there are people working on it. We have a lot of kind of silo work that's been going on, and we're just figuring, trying to figure out how to put that all together. There have been a couple of retreats. There's one coming up with a, a team that's doing it. Um, but I'm still learning part of that work that's coming. So, we will be asking probably for some help from ODE, um, and other experts around Measure 98, but the, the good news is there's a lot of exciting things happening. We just have to get it all coordinated. So, it's definitely one of those things top on my list to do, 'cause we don't wanna waste this opportunity, both in terms of Measure 98 and building facilities.
I think the, the other thing to add is it's, could be a win on multiple fronts, 'cause not only could kids get more CTE, and this isn't, isn't just Roosevelt, but the other high schools, but also the, um, mandate that actually schools have kids provide full instructional days.
Yeah.
And we're nowhere near where we're supposed to be, tracking towards the, the standard. So, it seems like you'd have an opportunity to, um, provide sort of enriched programming at the same time of filling what we, what we should be doing, uh, for our students and that the state requires.
I wanted to make the comment off of what Director Bailey said, Superintendent Guerrero. We really need better professional development for our teachers, very specialized professional development for our teachers, because from sometimes kind of bitter experience at Benson, we know that the skills it takes to send a group of students out to work on a hands-on project is very different than is even within a lab space, say, for a chemistry teacher. Uh, it's typically, it's been the people who have, actually have general contracting experience. So, Mr. Vincent, if, if you get tired, we, we may have other opportunities for it. Uh, but also, uh, Chair Brev Edwards, I wanted to point out that probably trying to get kids involved in a discussion about college or into CTE in their senior year, uh, we're waiting too late. Uh, I know that Superintendent Guerrero and I both have been getting a certain amount of brief from President Matsui at PCC, because we are leaving that discussion until kids are in high school, and we need to be having that discussion in middle school. Um, oh. Thank you very much.
I'm all for having it earlier, just making the point that they have the time, that you can fill, whether it's, uh, for a whole variety of things.
Good. I completely appreciate that.
So, not to belabor on this topic, we just thought it warranted a, a discussion and a deeper dive, because I don't think any of us would say CTE access and exposure isn't a priority for us. It's just, given projected continued enrollment at Roosevelt and the spaces they already have, are they maximizing those even if they had a couple more hundred kids? It sounds like the school community has a clear sense of that. We should all learn what that is. And if it's not here, I'm just, I'm just telling you, preview of coming attractions, if we're not gonna sort of cost-cut here, then it's going to come from somewhere else. So, um, that's all.
Great. Appreciate you all raising it, and, uh, Director Moore, I think your committee hopefully has this on its agenda at some point in the next couple months. Oh, you will.
I just gotta say, as, as the labor market economist in the room, if you look at STEM occupations outside of software programming, their projected growth is average. And STEM is the cool thing, but if you were looking at job opportunities, which isn't the sole determinant of what our CTE should be, it's student interest als, also part of it. But if we're looking, that's one piece of it, is let's not get too caught up in the latest thing.
With that, I'm gonna ask, um, back to, um...
Yeah, okay.
Slide 3.
So, I, I'd just like to say, this is the closest I've seen on full alignment of a board and, and superintendent administration wanting to tackle the CTE conversation since I've been here. If you've known me, I've been begging for it, because with all the bond measures I've done, it's your highest dollar per square foot space. You wanna be a good use of taxpayer dollar, you need it to be very intentional as to why you're doing. And, uh, and when that's not there, um, you know, it's, well, make it really flexible and put a lot of power in it, and we'll figure it out. And that's, you know, we've been fairly on purpose what we've done to date. Um, but with this next bond, and you're looking at Benson, you're looking at all these other CTE, plus the rising construction costs, uh, we would just really like to know why we're doing what we're doing. So, thank you very much. Uh, going into Grant, so, some of these things were already mentioned, but a couple of questions came up. So, first of all, the fire at Grant was Director Anthony. It was a piece of contractor equipment, you know? I mean, when that first went out on the scanners or whatever, people didn't know if that was Grant at Marshall. They didn't know if that was the Grant building, and nobody knew. So, it was a piece of equipment that was out there that caught on fire, and they put it out relatively quickly. Uh, the questions from Director Bailey on what does structural VC link mean? Uh, I'd like to have Scott talk about that, please.
So, the VC link is a, a area of the building that we're working on. And as we get through the demolition portion, Grant's in, in a transitional phase where we've finally completed a lot of the discovery of, uh, the demolition efforts, um, being able to get in and see the structure that we're working with. And the project team basically uncovered two large structural issues, um, that we're having to tackle now. One of which was the footings along that link are significantly higher in the ground than what the ASBIL showed. In order to maintain the, the learning environment as a part of the program, we have to excavate down below the footings, which means we now undermine them. So, we have to now engage in an underpinning exercise to continue to support the building. The other significant issues we run into are two main structural columns. As, um, we were doing the demolition, we determined did not have structural rebar in them from back in the day. Uh, we also learned, uh, for those of you who are into structures like I am, uh, they have cold joints. Basically, these structural columns were poured in multiple pores. So, think of the, it's essentially, instead of having a, a piece of the wall that's built with a, a two-by-four, um, stud as a solid piece, those are now basically a stack of teacups, so that they can bend, they flex, um, they don't have near the, the structural rigidity. And so, the project team is now, they've brought in multi-story shoring to support the rest of the structure. They're working through with the engineers now to figure out what are our options. You know, do we use some high-tech, uh, fiber composites to wrap the columns? Uh, do we repour them? What's the best way to maintain schedule and budgets and keep things moving? So, um, uh, long story short, they've, they have incurred some delays. Um, the, the team has really been focused and have come together, both the architects, the contractor, our own team members, to try to figure out, how can we get back on schedule? Um, and kudos to them, 'cause they're not waiting until we get to the end of the project and then try to make it all up at the end. They're trying to be proactive now of, let's accelerate now smartly, uh, when we have less, um, uh, contracting staff. We have about 100 to 120, uh, construction workers on site now. Later on in the project, we will have in excess of 250 workers. So, they're trying to be smart now with the acceleration costs. Um, some of the other challenges that we're, we're currently facing is we, um, through the abatement process, we were able to uncover, um, what is, we referred to as the asbestos dump. Um, back in the 50s and 60s, oftentimes, um, hazardous materials were disposed of directly on-site. You know, they were buried, um, with the new regulations and stuff. Um, we now have chain of custody, so we have to, um, haul off all contaminated waste all the way to licensed landfills such as Arlington. Well, through the port, process of our excavation, we found one of these old disposal sites. So, now, much of the excavation in this area has to be treated as a hazardous material abatement process with proper disposal.
Right.
It means containment. Normally, you know, these, these negative air pressure, where we pull the air in to keep stuff from spreading, we now have to build these containments out in the middle of, you know, the field while we remediate the soil. So, these have all been kind of, um, things that we've learned along the way that are kind of the unforeseen, oh, by the ways. Um, so, the team's trying to deal with those, both from the, the schedule perspective, but also, um, you know, um, that's why we have contingency. So, they're trying to be smart about monitoring that as well.
We, we didn't, we didn't want Grant to be left out. If you've been around long enough, uh, you remember that Roosevelt, we, uh, reported out, had large structural timbers up after we took all the ceilings and everything down, that were not on the record drawings, the ASBIL drawings. So, we had to shore up three stories tall, take those out, have new put in. And Franklin, when we got done underneath the belly of it, in the catacombs, that was a furniture dump. So, any furniture that was not needed last 30 years or so was buried in the dirt down underneath there, and we had to take that out. So, try to keep one surprise on each site there, and so we, we've got the one on Grant as well. So, um, but again, we, we had some contingency sets assigned for it.
So, there's a couple other, um, despite of all the, the focus that the team's having to spend on to keep things moving, there, there's been some really cool things that they're doing. Um, they've engaged with one of the students, um, we're hoping to show one of the, uh, future updates once we've had a chance to look at it, but they're using drones to actually do documenta, uh, documentaries about the process and, and explore the site. So, some really exciting stuff. We're also being proactive about thinking about the fact that the relationship, not only just for Grant itself, but projects that are related to Grant. So, Madison follows Grant, and so, the team's already engaging in trying to plan the transition, you know, of furniture, equipment. They have to, one has, one school has to leave Marshall in the summer while the next school has to move into it at the same time. So, they're starting that now, even though we're 18 months away from that, trying to be, identify the issues early upfront, so we can be as seamless and streamlined as possible.
So, we're also working on something with our SIP department, and we're gonna roll this out with students where at Grant, our subcontractor for, um, a lot of our infrastructure work has augmented reality goggles, and the superintendent had a chance to put these on. And, uh, so, uh, we want the students to understand what that's all about. So, you can look down a hallway that's been completely gutted, and then you can put the goggles on, and all the floor plans where the fire sprinkler's gonna go, electrical, all the duct work, have been loaded into BIM, they come into the, uh, building information modeling, it comes into the, the goggles, and they can literally see how everything is lining up in there. And it's not just a fun, techy thing to do. It literally lets you see where some of your clashes are, and that, that's not going to fit. That's in its way and everything. So, our, our, um, contractors use those out there, but we also want the kids to understand that, and we're working on how to work up a story where we cover just that, and what augmented reality now technology is being used in the construction workplace right now. Uh, moving on to, um...
There's a, oh, so this, we wanted to provide you kind of a quick idea of kind of where...
Yeah, okay, there you go.
The, the status of Grant today. So, as you can see, much of our demolition is complete, and we're, we're excited, 'cause we're moving into the part, the process where, uh, the construction guys like it, because we're actually getting to start to build, so.
And Director Bailey, I'll, I'll have to talk to you offline about the comments about, was there value engineering? Because we actually followed our Marshall Lottery report. We had a meeting, uh, with the DAG, discussed the value engineering at that time. I was wondering if maybe some of the information might be in a lag that's already been taken care of, because we've been out the work, and I've actually added money back into the project, which means scope into the project. So, maybe someone heard about something but doesn't know it's back. I'll, I'll, I'll meet with you. If you have some names or something, I can, I can catch up to it, because, uh, we, we shouldn't have that going on at this part of the construction project. We've, we've allowed for all that to take place.
I mean, one, one thing about the DAGs, I think their, majority of their role's in the front end, but I think they're also a really valuable community asset throughout the project at the very end. Um, I know in our neighborhood, the people who served on the Franklin DAG sort of were the community ambassadors for the project, so keeping them up to date actually, I think, puts out a lot of rumors and keeps, you know, people up to date. So, I think they can actually be a really useful asset for you throughout the project, not just in the front end.
You're absolutely right. We actually took them in many times with Roosevelt and Franklin. We'll do the same thing with Grant on hard hat tours. They're in construction, too, so I could actually see what was going on there. Uh, so, Kellogg, yes, we did get our, um, demolition and abatement bids in. They are under our budget. We'd like to be excited about that in terms of trajectory for the rest of the bond, but if you follow abatement and demolition, it doesn't follow suit with the built environment. Uh, so, it's a different cost factor in the built environment. This is the demolition environment. So, uh, but it will, we will take it. It is under bid, and we will take it. Uh, so, uh, we're just working on schematic design, like Director Rosen said. We would like to make each phase of your project schematic design, design development, construction drawing, whole at each point on budget versus, um, um, that phase. Uh, but we're dealing with in brand-new projects like Madison and Kellogg is the fact that when you're following an educational specification, projecting out three, four years with the midpoint, wherever construction is and what the cost might be, uh, you gotta balance those two, or it becomes very difficult to, to build anything. So, whereas just as concerned about the 2017 projects as, um, as the Bond Accountability Committee is too, like I said before, I've never seen this kind of, um, inflationary escalation rate that we're seeing. When I last reported to you in probably August, I said at that point, we still were experiencing , uh, labor escalation, but not commodities, um, the materials themselves. And from what all the contractors or cost estimers are telling us, is we are full-on on both right now. So, and with 5.4 billion out there coming, it's gonna be even more difficult. And a lot of our projects are a lot higher size, 180, 200 million, those kind of things, than some of the other projects that are going on out there. So, um, we have been doing a lot of that recruitment, talking to contractors. Um, Scott has helped set up, uh, for a Construction Management Association, the CMAA. We actually have made, myself and Dan, as guest speakers to talk on a topic, so we can have some roundtable afterward, shake some more hands, hand out some more business cards. It's coming up in, how is it, next week?
Next week, next week.
So, uh, we're, we're doing that outreach, refining the time, as we think they wanna hear from the head of the, of a school district, people who, you know, who, uh, can go out and inform them and say, we would like to have you bid on our work. Uh, we are looking for some sort of handout to them, where they can give us information, but feel none of the saying, why are you not coming to PPS? Is it the way we have these six or seven major onerous things that we ask you to do if you're low bid? We want all of our student engagement. We want our aspirational goals. We want our OSIP, owner-controlled insurance program. Why is it you're not coming here? Or is it our frantic to get it done over the summer, 'cause the kids are coming back? Is it our 78-years-old-on-average buildings? Why are you not coming here? Or is it just that attractive to do brand-new work, you know, green build, uh, environment with, um, private sector, and some of them can af, actually offer incentives? They can incentivize if you get it done sooner. And we think it's a little bit of all of that. So, but we're trying to engage them, and we're finding the time and our schedules to do it, 'cause we, we need bidders and, and contractors badly. Um, so, that's what we're doing right now. The condensing of the building design, we're looking at how do squeeze, squeeze, still meet the program need. Uh, the architect, Joe Planning, has been amazing. We have a part of the building that can be three-story instead of four. That might not sound really exciting, but when you can take a building envelope and that kind of volume from four-story to three for any part of it, all that translates into costs. So, uh, you know, but we do want, um, our feeder elementaries determined, we feel nervous that we're getting some help from OTL. We're getting, uh, help from our own maintenance folks and our own team, uh, but we don't have that voice out there. We did hold our community meetings, uh, Saturday for Kellogg. It was at Franklin. We had a pretty good turnout, a lot of questions asked. We, we put their dots up on the board. What's the most exciting part to you? What do you wanna see accomplished here? Uh, they were, um, the top ones were, um, um, sense of belonging and responsiveness to the culture there. It was, um, sustainability, and they were concerned with traffic. Hard to know if it's traffic, if it's the people right across the street who've enjoyed a closed site for a year, or if it's the Powell traffic. I know that was brought up, and so, it might be a bit of everything. So, we're taking those comments in, and, uh, and, and we, they also were able to fill out cards and leave them with us. So, our architect and our project team are looking over there, uh, looking over those comments. But overall, we had a lot of real positive, and, uh, they just can't wait to see it get started. And someone mentioned a November timeframe. So, not looking at, are we gonna hit with a rainy season? It just ends around November or December. The first kind of response would be, well, can't you just really crank that up, so it times itself with August? Uh, and, and my pushback is, no, uh, we're already pushing it to get it to November, number one. Number two, we just gave you an update that says we're still out on sites right now from August. It's just not as visible. And number three, it really is an impact on that staff, when we ask them to pack their things up in June and go away with anxiety and not knowing if the things are even gonna arrive and be unpacked and in the right place, uh, in August when they come back. So, allows us to do real punch-list work, uh, think, fixing all the little things, commissioning, move, yeah, you know, other furniture in that's coming in new. Uh, it'd be great to have all the teachers walk the finished product before the school year's out, and even cut a ribbon on a new... the finished product before the school year's out, and even cut a ribbon on a new facility in May with the board there, instead of really quickly in August before they occupy. A lot of people miss that kind of event in the summer, or you do it in September to tie it with back-to-school night, but you've already actually used a facility. We'll take a look at that. But right now, you know, it's November, December, and this district isn't like where it came from in California that has a history of attempting a mid-year opening, which is a whole nother level of involvement and politics. So I don't suggest that we go there with a mid-year opening. So, thank you.
Duly noted.
All right. Madison, same challenges on the budget, same outreach that we're doing. We have an RFP out right now for Construction Management, General Contracting?
Correct. We, it actually had closed today of the dozen-plus contractors in the area that are the size and accustomed to doing these kinds of projects. We only received three proposals today. I personally called one of the contractors that I know, talked to their general manager, and his, his words were that their concern was is that they couldn't get, hire enough staff to do the right job. They're very cognizant of the fact that in the Portland market, it's a very close, closed market, and that they, it wasn't for fear in some ways that, I think that they were going to lose the project as much as they might win it, and not be able to bring their A-team in Portland where, you know, their community members, you know, they want to continue in operation here. So it's, it's becoming business decisions of to compete. We have to have the very best people. I can't hire fast enough. It's a market-wide thing. And so they made a business decision of, even though they really want to work with the district, they want to be successful in delivering our outcomes. And so he apologized profusely, but he just felt it was in their best interest and ours to pass.
So recall, we advertised and had three general contractors, Construction Manager, General Contractors, CMGC for Franklin, three for Roosevelt, three for Grant, and now three for Madison. So...
The good news is, is that we do have a new name in the mix. So we're starting to get a little bit. We're hoping with this, the CMAA event, that Director Constan is going to be joining us, that to get out there and get the opportunity for these firms to connect with Portland public, to start to develop those relationships, that's also a critical factor for them. What sort of working relationships do they have with clients? And so it's a big focus for us going forward.
So with Lincoln, as Director Constan gave her update, the steering committees and DAGs have happened, are starting to take place. You know, so you look over on the what's next, and here we are with CMGC procurement for Lincoln next. And we have our three, and our three, and our three. I mean, this is the concern. And no one firm that I can see, they don't even know if they can deliver one of our projects, let alone if a firm submits on and becomes the low for two of them. Don't know how they're going to do that right now. They don't even know how they can do one. So if one of our three that keeps submitting becomes Madison after our interview, and one becomes, you know, you can see some of this coming, right? And how do we, and one was a Benson, or one was a Lincoln, what does this look like, right? So we're extremely challenged in the marketplace right now, and we're paying for it. We know there's going to be a recession, I believe, before our eight-year bond is over, so we're going to make this up on some project. I just don't know which one that is or when. And I'm not an economist, but that's my best thinking. And then, of course, like Director Remedware said on Benson, you know, even though we're timed out from the day, we just had a meeting this week with some people who are talking about business partnerships. And we had Jonathan Garcia in the meeting too. So there's people, we're talking it over, and we've got groups who are saying, "What if?" And we're seeing how this gets put together. And it's the reason we had Benson placed where they are right now, so we could look at some of the CTE overall, district-wise, so we could look at business partnerships and strategies, you know, and align that. So we've actually are doing a fair amount of work behind the scenes on Benson right now. And health and safety, you know, we are, our first 15 schools with lead and water are turned back on, and the drinking fixture component. Second phase is the work inside the classrooms, the water in the classrooms. Group two, if you recall, there's six groups, 15, and each group two has bid, and they have started, and they've mobilized. Group three has bid, and there'll be contracted paperwork and starting soon. So what was our 12-week in the beginning and our pilot as we learned and got feedback is dropping down to eight weeks, dropping down to six weeks. This is how we thought it would go. So we're on track to bid out group six by May, late April, May, Mike, I think we discussed. And then group seven was non-school facilities such as this building and others. So if we stay in the fixture area of the problems, and not in the walls, and not into the trenches, and all the way out through the street, we're projecting this out and find some wood here again for, for June, July. Originally, if you might have remembered, there was a three-year time horizon. We're out on the street for the bond and try to get this work done. The community wanted it faster. We're trying to react to that, and we would be done if this all works within about a 12, 13-month timeframe, of which bond money didn't even arrive in the bank until August or September this last year. So we have sent an email out to our old bond stakeholder advisory group members, saying, "Would you like to be part of a team where we tell you what we did immediate on the bond and intermediate, but we lay our future out and have you come and give input on this?" We sent that email out two days ago. We have eight responses so far. All eight are absolutely, "I'd like to be part of that." So, in the email, it says, you know, that I envisioned two meetings, one to explain to them the way we're laying it out, how our prioritization is looking, K-12, you know, Title I, whatever. And then depending on the amount of feedback, if it's a lot of change, a second meeting. If it's a little change, we might email that out to them. And then I asked for like 11-month from now commitment so we can explain the new year, the next year up to them. Because in environmental health and safety, some could change from this priority to now it's this one. And so far, the, all the responses have been, "Absolutely. Want to be part of it. Want to stay with it." So we're very pleased with that. And overall, we really have three bonds going on, four if you count the 2012. It's a little mini-bond of 28 million of water, lead-water. You know, we have our health and safety, the second part. There's the 2012, and then there's the four large projects in 2017, in terms of how we're bifurcated with our teams and how we're working on them. So they all have their own focus areas. Anyway, any questions of us?
I think we have some late-breaking information that's been scouted out, that we're asked about other bond projects in the region. Evergreen, 669 million seems to have passed, as well as Battleground for 224 million. So that's another $900 million in projects we need to be aware of that is only going to make the competition that much steeper.
It is. Well, thank you.
Jerry, I did want to ask you a quick. Kellogg demolition, has that been permitted yet? Or if not, is, how's that process going?
Yeah, those are all approved drawings to the city.
Oh, they are? Oh, great. Brilliant. Thank you.
So we're not doing CMGC. Those are hard-bid projects, so they're 100% complete design and city stamped out when we bid that. And that's currently the delivery method for the Kellogg rebuild as well.
Terrific. Thank you.
Good question.
Very good.
Thank you.
Can I, sorry.
Of course you can.
So the performance audit. So we finished with the, with the last crew for the 2012 bond. Are we going to have performance auditors for the 2017 as well?
Absolutely, absolutely. So is it out on the street, the RFP for the performance auditor?
No, yeah, we're in the process of crafting the RFP with purchasing and contracting. So I'm working closely with Kim Allenthal to pull that together currently.
Yeah. So are the performance auditing that, that the VAC was talking about is specific to our change orders of the existing bond, and how does that work, the over and under, and how we, how we did that? But, so when I got here, it was interesting. The performance auditor had a four-year contract on an eight-year bond, and the original thought, I think, was if we really show the community and the taxpayers after four years that we really have a handle on this, we should be good. And so I just said, "I don't believe that's going to happen." So we need to, that's what I think helped pass this second bond, is the belief that wherever we are on our, on our worst day, that we were doing a good job with our checks and balances on our capital planning. So we want to keep that going.
Thank you again, both of you.
Thank you.
We might need those augmented reality goggles for some other projects.
Kitchen remodel?
I just want one to wear all the time.
Thank you. And really exciting as a community member to see the health and safety work progressing. I think that's highest priority for parents in the district.
It was great to be at Roosevelt last night and drink from the drinking fountain, which I haven't done with confidence in a school in the...
So finished with facilities. We're going to move to enrollment and transfer. We have two items tonight. The things of enrollment and transfer. We have one issue, which is a very small boundary change. There's a boundary resolution before us that was forwarded to us from the Enrollment and Forecasting Board Committee. Director Bailey, do you want to present the committee's recommendation?
Right. So the Enrollment and Forecasting Committee voted 3-0 to rescind a small boundary change that had been in the resolution that we approved in November. That would have shifted part of Alameda to Rose City Park. The rationale is one that would affect only a handful of kids. And secondly, Rose City Park is projected to be at full capacity, so it does not need the kids. So it seemed like the thing to do. And again, I at least am committed to a systemic fixing of our boundaries to balance enrollment, and look forward to that in the future. But...
So question to the committee chair. So if the, so that's projected at 100%, would it be fair to say that if there's significant erosion in the projected numbers that there may, not before next school year, but during the following year, be an examination of what adjustments might need to be made?
Yes. And I think that's really true of all the shifting that's gone on around middle schools, is that projecting kindergarten is a challenge. And we found out this past year with the Peninsula Chief Joe boundary shift, that it was done with the best projections in mind, and it didn't work out. So we'll keep an eye on that. But again, hopefully we can do this as a whole system and not as a one-off.
But we also found that the projections for the enrollment of Oakley Green underestimated the interest in attending a middle school. So I think it's, I mean, I voted for this change because I think it's prudent to be careful that we don't set Rose City Park up to be over-enrolled when the doors open.
Yeah. And again, Rose City Park feeds into Roseway Heights, and that's the number we really have to watch over the long run.
So the watch, the watchword is, all boundaries will continue to be examined as we are opening and closing and shifting things.
Absolutely.
This isn't a vote for all time.
No.
Okay. Any other, any discussion, discussion or questions for the chair of the committee?
Leading members?
Yeah, I'm just, I was now going to ask for a motion for, on resolution 5571.
So moved.
Second?
So it's been moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Constan. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment? No public comment. Any further board discussion? The board will now vote on 5571. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Student Rep.
Yes.
Resolution 5571 is approved by a 7 to 0 vote, with Student Representative Tran voting yes. Our second open enrollment agenda item this morning, or this evening, is relating to open enrollment. And under state law, PPS and those school districts need to declare by March 1st whether they'll participate in open enrollment. So tonight, we're going to have a presentation by Judy Brennan, and then we'll have a vote at the next board meeting. So with that, Director Brennan?
Good evening, Judy Brennan, Enrollment Director. I've got some technical information about open enrollment, which is an annual opportunity that's available through state law for districts to enroll students from other districts without permission from those home districts. Generally, PPS opts out of open enrollment. We have many other transfer opportunities within our district that tend to fill our schools just fine. And we use other processes to make sure that students who have moved out of district have the opportunity to remain in our schools. However, when there are places where we find alignment with other district priorities that seem suitable, we think it makes sense to, to have a plan for open enrollment. So this year, I'm coming to you with a draft plan that meets two different priorities. The first is the opportunity to start our Return to Albina initiative, which is a process that we've been working on with community partners since July. And I wonder, actually, if this might be a good moment to pause? Because I would really like you to make, to make sure that you understand more about the why we would do it, before I get into the weeds about the how. And it's, I've been pleased to be a part of a team with Director Asparza Brown, Director Moore, along with Natasha Butler, and Janine Fakuta, and two of our community partners. And I just wondered maybe if this would be a time to pause. I'm going to turn it back to the two board co-chairs to see if you want to make some comments about Return to Albina initiative, since that really frames why we use it for open enrollment.
Make a few comments. The community came to us to ask about the potential of following a concept that was, that was, the city is doing in terms of providing housing, I want to say priorities, I guess, for people that were kind of gentrified out of the Albina area, and in, and wanting to have the same opportunities for the students whose families, there are some families that we know likely bring their students back, maybe using relatives' addresses, and wanting to have a better number and transparency there. And then also students that, again, have, have moved outside of the PPS boundaries for some opportunities to come back to the area that was kind of rightfully their area. Does that sum that up? So we're looking at the process the city used in terms of identifying families that could prove residency with certain artifacts. And so we have worked with our partners, SEI in particular, of trying to conceptualize what that could look like, of providing some priorities, priority spots, basically, for families that might be interested in this kind of returning to Albina. Add anything?
No, I'd just say that I think it was a, it has been, you know, a really good process to, to talk with the community partners and hear about what the African-American community is looking for in terms of providing opportunities for, for students coming from families who were displaced because of gentrification. It's also happening in the midst of a real effort by the city to encourage new housing opportunities, specifically designed to bring back some families who were displaced. So this would be an opportunity to sort of join forces with the city around building collaboration between the city's housing efforts and the school district. So I, that to me is very exciting as a prospect, because I think we need to be, we as a... think we need to be, we as a district, I think, need to be paying very close attention to housing patterns in general and, and how this city is developing, to ensure that we have students in the future.
And while we would take those numbers into consideration of city housing and the potential impact on our schools, these are students who are, would not get the, probably the priority housing that are outside of our boundaries, and allowing some kind of a transfer back system for X number of students. So, that's what the concept is.
And, and I think we're, we haven't met in, in a little while since.
Next week.
Before the holidays. But there, there have been efforts to gauge the level of interest among families and students who are currently living outside the district boundaries. And I have yet to hear the results of that. So.
Yeah, you'll speak to that.
We'll be hearing about it soon. But I, I think it's, it's been a, it's been a good partnership at this point. And I'm sort of looking forward to working on the, on this policy change that's, that's going to make this possible.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think that maybe we could all agree that renewed housing is the, is the final pathway, so that students could actually attend the neighborhood schools that their parents and grandparents were able to attend. But what we're trying to do here is build pathways to schools in the meantime, for families who are willing to take that long commute because of the importance of maintaining that tied to their historical community. What we learned in our survey that our community partners actually conducted for us is that about two-thirds of interested families, and we heard from more than 100, families that represented more than 100 interested students, about two-thirds of them do live out of district. Now, some do live in our Portland Public School boundary, and those students would have some transfer rights through our standard petition process. But for students who live out of district, they could be stuck in the bind of the standard process, which requires two applications, two timelines, two sets of rules for how you can come back in. Open enrollment provides an opportunity to simplify that process. And our community partners are in support of us going ahead and opening this now, and, and will help us with the outreach to families, to reduce barriers to interested families, and taking advantage of the opportunity. So, because of that, we've got a plan tonight that would bring open enrollment slots to the newly reopening Harriet Tubman Middle School next year, 50 slots at Harriet Tubman, and 25 slots at Jefferson High School. Now, those are for students who would be coming from other districts through open enrollment. It doesn't include additional students who are already in PPS, who might be Return to Albina eligible. So, that's, that's one part of the open enrollment package. The second part.
May I ask a question before you move on to the other programs? Are there any provisions with this, with the Harriet Tubman proposal for sibling preference in elementary school or high school?
Yes, we can provide preference for siblings. So, for example, if there were more applicants than space, we would give priority to students who are already enrolled in a PPS school, but are just, you know, sort of certifying their place here through open enrollment, or siblings of students who are already at Harriet Tubman. So, those are ways that we can give priority.
Thank you.
Second opportunity is some slots that we would like you to approve at two of our immersion programs, that are smaller than our typical immersion programs, that have experienced a fair amount of attrition. And while there is definitely interest in the Portland Public Schools, there's strong interest from other districts. And those students are often, there's often barriers to those students enrolling because of the standard inter-district process. So, that's the Kelly Russian Immersion Program, and the Vietnamese Immersion Program, which will be at Rose City Park next year. I want to make it very clear that we would not use this open enrollment opportunity as a way to grow those programs, that is, to add whole sections of students. That's not the intent here. The intent is to make it easier for students who would likely be able to, to enter the program later, but for the difficulties of the standard inter-district process. So, those are the two areas that we'd like to propose open enrollment. And I thought for tonight, if I could just hear any questions you have about the details, and then I think we're trying to find a time to schedule with the Enrollment and Forecasting Committee to review the resolution that we'd really like you to vote on at your next meeting on February 27th. Open enrollment decisions have to be made by every school board in the state by March 1st. And we'll, we need to open it on March 1st, so we need to get ready with our communication plan.
So, thank you for the presentation. I want to thank the vice chairs for your role in the dialogue. I think it was our very first board meeting, our very first panel of community members who brought this issue to us. So, it's nice to see it's coming to fruition, even though it's going to be right under the deadline. So, with that, I'd like to ask if people have questions. Director Asparza Brown?
Yeah, I had a question on what you just said about the Russian and Vietnamese enrollment, that you're looking to, what did you say about provide future opportunities? Or clarify that, please?
Yes, ma'am. So, students who might be able to enter the program.
Yeah.
Because there's space. For example, in a, a second grade that has two sections, about only 33 students, we have space for additional students.
But if they hadn't been in the, in K and 1, they don't enter a dual-language program coming from English-only instruction in second or third grade.
Unless they have the language ability. And in open enrollment, we have a little bit more flexibility in the questions that we can ask. So, we would be able to make sure that students were eligible before we could enroll them.
Okay, so I hope we're asking questions not just about language ability, because it's not just about speaking the language, but literacy that, where they could jump in at a second grade. So, I think we have to be really careful there.
Yes, ma'am. And we, just, just in case anybody's watching that knows these rules, we are not allowed to ask questions about English proficiency. We can't ask about proficiency in target languages. And I'm actually dusting off all of the open enrollment rules and checking them with ODE. We haven't done this for a while. We don't want to ask the wrong questions. But if this does allow us to identify eligible students, and in many cases, the students who are interested in these programs are emerging bilingual students who happen to live across district lines, but then they're barred from entering the only program that they are speaking the target language at home, the only one that's available in this region.
So, I have a couple.
Did you have a follow-up?
So, I had a couple of questions, and this is just about the, so the logistics. So, say on the 27th, we vote to proceed with open enrollment. It's a very specific set of schools and slots. There's, on the other end, there's these students, whatever, the 100 students that we've identified, who maybe go to Reynolds, David Douglas, Centennial, let me pick the districts. The way it works is those districts would also have to agree to open enrollment, or can they not, they, they can not vote to have an open enrollment period, but they would still release their students and the, the funds that follow them?
Yes, so, great question. Open enrollment is different from the standard process in that resident districts have no say in the outcome. So, it's simply a matter of if you get approved to the district that you're requesting, you're enrolled. And that district has to make a space for you through 12th grade. We, PPS loses about 100 students each year, up to about 120 through open enrollment to other districts. David Douglas, Lake Oswego, lots of other districts participate in open enrollment, and we have many resident students who go there every year.
And the funding follows.
Yes, ma'am.
But we don't have, so we don't have to worry that what other districts do in terms of filling these slots. So, once we open them, if they come.
During that one month. So, that's, and if we follow the open enrollment rules. So, it's a limited opportunity that then relaxes, or actually suspends, the rule that the resident district has to get permission.
And so, I have a follow-up question on, unrelated to the Return to Albina, but about the, the other two programs. Does, does the Russian program and the Vietnamese program, I know the Vietnamese program doesn't yet have a high school component, but does the Russian, does the Russian program have an articulation to a high school currently? Because I, I notice here that once we approve, if they, if they come to Kelly for Russian, or they come to PPS for Vietnamese language schools, then they're, they're here through high school.
Yes, ma'am.
And what?
At Franklin High School. And in fact, the program, the second cohort of high school students is at Franklin now, and it's a very, very small cohort. So, the whole purpose of trying to build stronger cohorts in the early grades is so by high school, you actually have enough students to warrant that, the, the teaching component that, that they would need, instead of having six or seven students. The, the path is Kelly to Lane to Franklin. And we anticipate the path for Vietnamese immersion at this point as Rose City Park, Roseway Heights Middle, Madison High School.
I think we, didn't we put, approve that as part of our feeder?
I actually thought I got into trouble for talking about high school immersion.
But I thought we included it in the resolution. I think you got in trouble, but I think we did it.
I get into trouble all the time. And I remember, I remember my frequent meetings, and that was one.
Well, the conversation is about how do you have a program fidelity K to 12, right? With staffing, curriculum materials, et cetera. You want them to be strong. We'd love to see that continuity, but it gets really dicey in the secondary, especially with all the other constraints on student schedules. So, this really is a good teaching and learning topic, especially as DLI and the role of language pathway options gets increasing interest around what is the right balance of those programs. I mean, we've seen a recent action around, you know, going full immersion at one site. I think we're going to hear from other communities, predictable. So, it's a good topic.
Other questions? Director Condam?
Yeah, Judy, so, have you, have we engaged in any conversations with our East, other East County districts about long-term sustainable plan for the Russian immersion program? Because we've talked about this in the past, given that the majority of these students are from outside of our district. Have we sat down together to talk about how we all best serve these kids?
I'd love to say that we have.
She's looking at you.
In these first 100 days, I've let you down and haven't done that.
I haven't been involved in those conversations, but I'm sure that there are opportunities, and, and I'm sure it's on your lengthy list of topics to, for your new colleagues across the district.
We will telegram a desire to send a delegation over to have this conversation. I, I'll bequeath our new deputy to take that one on.
And it will become all the more relevant when we really start looking at our boundary changes and reconfiguration in outer southeast Portland, and how do we need to.
Exactly.
Put these buildings in service to our kids.
Yes.
Uh, two questions. One is, do you know, do other districts who have done the open enrollment, do they like market that, or is it just kind of out there?
Well, you're forbidden by state law to recruit students from other districts. The district is. So, but if your Lake Oswego School District, for example, and you happen to take out an ad in a newspaper that serves your district, but also happens to serve nearby districts, that's not really recruiting other students. That's informing your own students as well.
Does, and do those ads specifically talk about open enrollment, or?
I think you're really limited in what you're allowed to say. But I think if you were to say, "It's transfer season" at like, at X nearby school district, then, you know, that, that would convey the message. I know that, that for, for us, in order to reach the audiences that we think would most benefit from this opportunity, we're going to have to have support of community partners. I mean, we really aren't in, so from my perspective, we are not seeking these opportunities to grow enrollment at Portland Public Schools. We've continued to grow at a steady clip. And as you all know, managing our growth is an enormous challenge. So, this isn't meant to heap additional students in that. It's meant to shore up what we have, to make good on commitments to our community, to, to strive for equity, and to work with our community partners to get that done. So, if you're thinking, if you're wondering, if the follow-up is, what would marketing look like for us, we would really need to reach out to partners to say, "How can you make sure that eligible students might be aware of this?" We're not saying they have to apply, but we'd at least like them to know that it's an opportunity.
And I would just say, from a district point of view, and talking about cooperation with our surrounding districts, marketing is the last thing that we want to do. Just want to put that out there. That's, I don't think any of us wants to get into a marketing war or anything like that. A second question is, you talked about Return to Albina within PPS through hardship petitions. Does any of the current criteria that we use for hardship petitions meet up with?
Well, we don't have a prescribed set of criteria that must be asked, so we always have flexibility to add additional questions to prioritize students that we, we think would benefit from transfer. So, we, we have many students who have had to move out of inner north and northeast Portland to, to further edges. The maps, both from the city housing planning, Housing Bureau, where they've surveyed more than 2,000 residents interested in the housing program. And our survey that, that community partners did, with more than 100 responses, maps really closely. You see a lot of students on the peninsula, up in the St. John's area. You see a lot of students in outer southeast and northeast, and then you see a bulge of students particularly in far outer east, in the Reynolds, Park Rose, Gresham Barlow region. But we have a fair number of students within PPS. And if they request transfer to Harriet Tubman Middle School, and they can show that they have a historical link to the Albina community, they would have priority for transfer into that school. It's not a guarantee, but they would have priority above another interested student who doesn't have that same background.
I have one last question. Do you, I get inquiries regularly from people interested in, for outer west side students interested in transfer to Beaverton, particularly given that they have a capacity at the high school level now. Do you know whether they're participating in open enrollment?
I do not know. But every district has to decide by March 1st, so it will be open season soon.
I, I just wanted to note that when we were discussing carving out seats for, for returning students for the Tubman New Middle School, we were very clear that we needed to keep the number, we needed to be cognizant of making sure that we have a robust program at Tubman when the doors open. And since we, since we've never done this before, we don't really know what the demand is going to be. So, we limited it to 50 seats, which we think, our best guess is that it's going to probably satisfy demand. But if we don't fill all of those seats from outside the district, it would not jeopardize the, the enrollment at Tubman. So, it would, it would not jeopardize the program in any way. And the other thing that we heard for many, many years, especially from the Sackett process, was that a lot of students are, are, are using other people's addresses. Often grandparents, aunts, it's, students are, are tied to schools because of childcare arrangements for the family. They want to, you know, there's a, there's a family connection, and there's a very strong interest in regularizing their status. They want, they don't want to have to lie anymore. And this is going to allow them to do that, both within the district and outside.
Do we have planning? What enrollment are we, is our best guess, best estimate for next year for our middle schools?
I don't, I'm, I don't have those numbers in front of me, and I wouldn't want to wager a guess.
So, since we don't, since we don't have to, we're not voting on this tonight, maybe Director Bailey, we could ask somebody to get you that information?
I just saw five fingers from Antonia. Around 500 for, for each. About 500.
About 500. We'll make sure you have some-
We'll get the data.
And again, so I would encourage all board members, if you have additional questions, to get them in, because we will need to be making, just because of the closeness between our vote and the deadline, we'll be definitely voting on this next board meeting. So, thank you for the presentation and answering the questions, and thanks to the two vice chairs for your ongoing engagement through this process for the district. I think it'll be, it's going to be great for the community. Then, our next item is a consideration of a step three complaint. The board received a packet of information on this matter and will now be voting on whether or not to hear a step three complaint. Is there a board member who'd like to make a motion to affirm the superintendent's decision in this matter?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Director Rosen and seconded by Director Sparza Brown to affirm the superintendent's decision, and I want to clarify that this means we will not be agreeing to hear the appeal. So, a yes vote is, we are not going to be hearing the appeal. And there's no public comment on this matter, so there, and there's no discussion as well, correct? That's correct. So, board members, all in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed?
No.
I'm going to ask for roll call vote.
Yes.
Director Bailey?
No.
Director Sparza Brown?
Yes.
Director Moore?
Yes.
Director Anthony?
No.
Director Constable?
Yes.
Yes. So, the motion passes, and I believe in this case, the student rep does not vote. So, it passes on a five to, five to two vote. Thank you, board members. So, next, we are going to Board Committee and Conference Reports, and we're running just about five minutes behind. I want to just remind everybody that we have a very short executive session after the board meeting, very short.
We always say that.
It will be, unless board members decide to make it long.
That's always the case.
That reminds me of a story.
So, since our last board meeting on January 23rd, the following committees have met. The Charter Committee has met twice, the Finance Audit and Operations Committee has met twice, and the Legislative and Governmental Committee met right before this meeting. So, I'm going to ask the committee chairs whether they'd like to provide reports, and I would ask that we try and be succinct, but cover what you need. Oh, and I'm also going to ask Student Rep Tran to provide a report. Do you want to go first?
Sure. So, I must admit, Supersac had a little bit of a rough start this year, but I think we finally narrowed down what we really want to work on in the next five months and what we want to accomplish before we leave our, finish out our term. So, right now, we're really developing of how issues start at the school and how, what's the process to get them to Supersac? So, what forms and proposals do we want them to have ready to present to Supersac and have those readily available on our website? And then from there, how do those proposals or issues go from Supersac to the board? So, and how does that work with outside organizations, such as like the Multnomah Youth Commission, which is the youth policymaking body for Multnomah County? What can we do for the rejected ones? And then for urgent issues, how do we address those? And maybe even explore middle school and elementary for next year? Right now, we really just want to solidify high school before we move down into the lower levels of middle school and elementary school. And the purpose of this really is specifically between Supersac and the board. So, how do I move that proposal or recommendation from Supersac to the board? Does it need to go to a committee? Like, just that process, so that we have an official process in paper of how we do that for future student representatives, so they don't have to relearn the process or recreate the wheel every time a new student representative is elected. From there, I had a president, a meeting with all the ASB presidents from the district a few weeks ago, because I really believe that we need to do some organization level at the high school before Supersac can really thrive or accomplish the work that it wants to do. So, we're having our next meeting February 27th, if that matters. And then hopefully bring an updated version of the student rep policy between April and May, and start the work plan for next year. And then, in addition to that, Supersac hopes to host a student collaboration event across all the district high schools with school leadership, and have this event really be an opportunity for central office, and maybe even invite a few district leadership to come, so that the leadership in our schools can put a face in the name to those who are making decisions in their schools. And then, a personal thing I'm working on is collaborate, hopefully building events so that student representatives across the state can collaborate, and see what we're working on, and move forward together as a student front in the state and not just our district.
Great. Thank you, Representative Tran, and I would encourage you, if you have issues that you'd like to bring, bring to the board or bring to the committees, to come to or send a note to the, when board leadership meets with the superintendent to set the agenda, we'd be more than happy to find, find the best way to bring something that the students want to put before the board.
All right. And then, the Multnomah Youth Commission did come present to Supersac about starting later school times, and thank you Chairman Howard for that note.
Great. Thank you. Dr. Anthony?
Very quickly, the Charter Committee has met. We've reviewed the five schools up for renewal, and had a public hearing yesterday on the renewal for LeMond. I believe it's going to be coming to the board for a vote also at the end of the month. So, the work's proceeding very quickly.
Thank you. You set a, you set a standard for the rest of the chairs.
I know.
Chair Constable?
So, the Legislative Committee heard, discussed the draft proposals for the nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policy, which has been long in the way, long in the making, and this review partly, partially came out of the initial settlement in the Whitehurst case and our interest in reviewing all of our own policies on that. So, really glad to see that come forward. That, so this is a revised policy that we had some discussion on. We're going to allow a little bit of time for individual members of the committee to address any points with the legal team, but barring any significant differences there, we want to bring it to the full board as soon as possible. And then, we also discussed a brand-new policy, which is, came from a state mandate, which is the teen dating violence and domestic violence policy. And so, we also intend to bring this to the board as soon as possible, and with the development and revisions of these policies, the legal team has also fully fleshed out administrative directives that will accompany them. So, this represents a lot of work that we're really anxious to see filtered down to all of our school leaders, so that they really, we really have systems in place for how to respond to these kind of concerns. The Title IX Coordinator plays a key role in addressing, triaging, tracking these concerns, and also just making sure that they, they come forward in the first place. So, this is really important work, and I look forward to our full, full board discussion of that. We also had an update on the proposed city policy on unreinforced masonry buildings, so they're looking at new mandates on that, which has a huge impact on us, because schools are a classification unto themselves that have some time horizons attached to when we need to address dangerous situations in these buildings. We have about 30 that are on this register of vulnerable buildings in the event of a major earthquake, and so we discussed as a committee how we might testify before city council or bring our collective voice into their deliberations in terms of how long we would have to comply, and some other issues around that. So, that's, has a big potential impact for us. And then, also just our, our staff liaison Courtney Westling is in Salem almost every day this month for the special session, and keeping us apprised, apprised of everything education-related and letting us know if there's a need or opportunity for testimony on things of interest to us. And the bill, the one bill that we are, we have actually brought forward regarding the local option revenue collection mechanisms, it looks to have a hearing, a full hearing on the floor this Thursday. So, hopefully, we'll be able to put that behind us. And then, just one other report that I wanted to give is that I did attend the OSBA conference last Friday, ballots, buildings, and bonds in Salem, which, continuing on the theme that we heard tonight, there were over 350 people there, which apparently is a lot more than in the past, and there are districts that have recently passed bonds and are looking to participate in conversations around best practices, or districts that are looking to put bonds on the ballot and feeling hopeful for the first time in a long time. And I gave the keynote address at lunch about building a bond package and a bond campaign around health and safety needs. And so, it's really gratifying to be able to share all that great work that we did in terms of inventory of our facilities, and also just how we communicated with the voters about the necessity of addressing those needs. So, we, they have a link now to our full gap analysis and some other key documents of ours as part of that presentation. So, it's a lot of work going on out there, and, and more on the ballots coming up, so that's it.
Not that we're encouraging other people to go out, though.
Well, we are. I mean, of course we are.
Let's see, I think all the actions on this slide, sorry guys. Director Moore, your committee, your committee met as well, twice?
Yeah, Finance Audit and Operations met last week, and it was a, it was a very full meeting, and, and a really good one. The second half of it was talking about work plan, so we're having a board session, work session tomorrow. So, the committee was working on the, the committee's work plan in preparation, but the, the big news was that Superintendent Guerrero announced the finance transition team, and I could go through it, or you could if you'd like. Do you want me to do it?
Please do.
Okay. So, the, the transition team, as you know, we've had a, a recent resignation of the CFO, so we now have a three-person transition team who's going to be working on the immediate work of building a budget for next year, but in addition, while that's happening, coming up with a general assessment of our internal capacity around financial matters, doing an assessment of needs and gaps, and kind of developing a strategic plan going forward. So, the members of the team are Ryan Dutcher, who has been working with PPS for the last three years, Ashley Gunter, who will be doing the, the kind of strategic assessment, and Jim Scherzinger, who is going to be playing a senior advisory role. And many people may recognize him as a former superintendent of PPS, and also former CFO. He, he was last a member of PPS in, I think, 2003? 2004. And has spent the interim, I, a good bit of it was the acting as COO for the Department of Human Services. He is, he is renowned in this city and this state, and I think we're really lucky to have him. So, we also have the project man, program manager, project manager for the budget process is Max Holford, who is new to PPS. And, and the rest of the meeting was spent talking about a sort of preliminary timeline for the budget process, and some discussion about how the board is going to interact with staff around budgetary decisions, and, and it all sounded really good.
Well, I'll offer an update since last week. So, this trio is very quickly assessing our needs, and I think the directors should stay tuned for formalizing some roles into an interim basis, because it's become very apparent to them how, how we need to structure the work, at least through the remainder of the school year. So, stay tuned.
Excellent. And I guess I'm going to just say that there is-
No, please, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say that the Policy and Governance Committee will be scheduling an upcoming meeting on the public, revised public records policy, and also the school naming policy, and it'll be followed shortly thereafter by revisions to the complaint policy, and also the conflict of interest slash nepotism policy. So, those have been moving through the, as people will recall, we're moving through the process last year. We've done a lot of work on them, and it's just ready, they're ready to come to the board for first readings or a second first reading. So, that should be, that'll be in the pipeline and should be noticed soon. Director Anthony?
Thank you. Just very quickly, these were not Portland Public meetings, but they certainly relate to Portland Public Schools and to the community, and I wanted to note them very briefly. Last week, Regency Blue Cross and Cambia Healthcare held their annual symposium for union and trust representatives. It dealt mainly with the rising cost of prescription drugs. Portland Public is doing rather well, but a lot of the examples are outrageous, as we all know. The most relevant topic, though, was the ongoing opioid epidemic, and I mention this because it's coming to me from different sources almost every day. I would say that it's in the water, but Jerry Vincent's head would explode. It's becoming increasingly clear that Portland Public Schools needs to do a great deal more to help impacted children. Both Regency Blue Cross and Cambia Healthcare are very interested in partnering with us. They'd love to help provide us with naloxone, which is the drug for treating overdoses, and they would be very happy to train our faculty and staff in how to use it. They are in touch with Jonathan Garcia, and I think we'll be hearing something very good very soon. And then, yesterday, I attended the monthly meeting of the local Safety Coordinating Council, Lipsec, and the main topic, again, was presentation by Dwight Holton, the Executive Director of Lines for Life, about opioids. And he is in charge of the statewide effort to reduce their use and abuse. A happy little statistic from Dwight is that last year, there were over 220 million opioid pills prescribed in Oregon. So, that is 60 per resident, and if you didn't get yours, somebody else did. But that's actually good news, because three years ago, that number was 280 million. Dwight is also very encouraging of us taking a look at the issue, and he has a wonderful presentation. I have put him in touch with the directors of the nursing and dental programs at Benson, and if there are any other medically related CTE programs out there, I would love to hear about them. I've also suggested the program at Madison for him. Dwight also does weddings, graduations, and bar mitzvahs. Dwight also does weddings, graduations and bar mitzvahs. So fabulous things to come.
Thank you, Director Anthony. So thank you for everybody reporting. I'm sure next meeting, this half of the board will be reporting. So now we'll consider the remainder of the business agenda, having already voted on Resolution 5571. Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull for separate consideration and vote? Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda? There are not. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
Second.
Director Bailey moves and Director Constance seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on the business agenda? Is there any board discussion on the business agenda? The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Student Representative Tran?
Aye.
The motion passes and the business agenda resolution is adopted by a seven to zero vote with Student Representative Tran voting aye. Is there any other business or committee referrals? Seeing none. Before I adjourn, I just want to remind the board members, the faster we get up to the room for our executive session, the sooner everybody can go. So we are now adjourned. The next meeting is February 27.